Good now. Okay. All right, it is four oh two. I will open this Grand County Commission, regular Grand County Commission meeting February twenty first. All present are the same as we're at the workshop with the addition of County Administrator Mallory Nassau. Actually, I I'm not opening the Grand County Commission meeting. I'm opening the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Meeting. All present are the same as previously said. First off, we'll have a citizens to be heard, and this is a citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Fire District. So if you're here for the regular commission meeting, then you will wait till we open that meeting. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on Thompson Springs? And is there anyone online who wants to be heard on Thompson Springs? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of meeting, meeting minutes approving the meeting minutes from the January seventeenth meeting, which are in our packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Thank you, Trish.
Second.
Thanks, Mary. I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner McGann to approve the minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. We're up to ratification of bills and general reports. The ratification of Thompson Springs Fire District bills, total bills in the amount of two thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and sixty-four cents, total payroll in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents for total bills and payroll in the amount of four thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved.
Thanks. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen to approve the bills and a second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any discussion on the bills? Call for a vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to our fire chiefs report, and is Chief Markham with us on Zoom? I don't see him in the chambers. You don't see him. Would, uh, let's see.
Looks like the reports just attached. Did you?
Okay.
You want me to share it?
Um, sure, Trish, that'd be great.
So it just, it's really quick. It just says all equipment and apparatuses are functioning properly. They had a couple of trainings. One was on January twenty-first, twenty-second, Winter Fire School in St. George, Survival Fire Behavior Reporting Systems Training. And on February first, they had a pipeline safety and awareness training. Other preparations are being made for the twenty-three fire, wildland fire season mandatory training and testing, research, state agreements, MOUs, personal, personal gear and firefighting equipment being checked. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you, Trish and Chief Markham. It looks like we don't have any more yet, Trish. Any more new or old business, future considerations? So unless anyone has anything else pertaining to the Thompson Fire District, I will adjourn the meeting. All right, and we will, now I will call to order the meeting of the Grand County Commission February twenty-first. All present are as stated before, and we will all rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right, we'll open our citizens to be heard. We'll also have a citizens to be heard at six o'clock. And there are honestly less people in the chambers than I was expecting, so that's a what it is anyway. So you may, when you, if you want to be heard, raise your hand, I'll recognize you. If you would please come forward to the table and speak into the microphone, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to be heard, and I'll alternate between the chambers, and there's probably a few people on Zoom as well. So who in the chambers would like to come forward to be heard? Yes, sir, on the end here. Okay, uh, I'll, yeah, you come forward, you can state your names, and I'll, I'll still give you the three minutes.
We've been here previously on Mark Pett, this is Troy Harris concerning item number seven. The Red Rock Roundup later on in the meeting today. We're inquiring at that time if we're going to be allowed to speak, and if we're not going to, we're going to speak now during the citizens here.
Yeah, you, you can speak now. I, Commissioner Winfield is the one who'll be presenting that, but I will, I'll allow you time to, to stand up here and to speak to that particular item, if you like. I, I'm not looking at like, you know, not like a ten-minute presentation per se, but you can definitely speak to the particulars of it and answer questions from the commissioners if you wish.
All parties of the actual roundup were here today.
Okay.
We will wait until then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the chambers who would like to be heard? Uh, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Pete Gross. I have a confession. I have a bad habit of procrastinating, and I haven't even finished writing our remarks. I waited until the last minute. The last time I intended to come to citizens be heard, I missed out because I was slow. But I'd like to point out that when I do procrastinate, I'm usually the one that suffers the consequences, usually other than other people. But I don't know if I would have a chance to speak during item six or seven on your agenda, but I want to speak to another procrastination incident, and that was someone who was applying for a special permit for a special event beyond the window of when your new rules, which you passed in October unanimously, are allowed. The special event would have negative impacts upon a community of more than five thousand people. When I procrastinate, it usually just affects me, maybe one of the two other people. Procrastinators' personal emergency is not our personal emergency. I think if the person procrastinated would like to come at a later time, submit their attention to apply for a special permit and do it according to the rules of the county commission. I think that's entirely appropriate, but I think it's a no-brainer to reject this attempt to get a special exception for a special event that would have such a high impact on the community. So I thank you for your time, and I appreciate, I hope that you have the appropriate response, just like you would have had to me if I shown up at that other meeting and said, hey, I'm late, but can you hear what I have to say? That would have been inappropriate. I think it's inappropriate to give an exception for this special, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
I'll go on, on Zoom. It looks like there's a few people on Zoom. If you would like to be heard on Zoom, please use your raised hand signal. Jane, yeah.
Thank you. My name is Jane May, and I'm a forty-year citizen of Grand County. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and be heard. My comments concern Agenda Item Number Seven, and I respectfully request that the commission reject the application itself for Moab Red Rock Roundup twenty-twenty-three. Not due to any details about the event itself, whether I agree with them or not, but I believe that the application in your hand, whether it was even turned in on time, whether there are liabilities or legalities with regard to that. I do believe there are liabilities and legalities for your, for the application in its current state. And I believe it's inherently flawed, as well as being inaccurate, potentially for the reason regarding the information that you've been provided with, that your advisory committee was provided with in this application. And the legal status of this event and business in Moab is the first reason I'd like to speak to. And that is that I am uncertain that this is even a registered and licensed business in the city of Mo, Moab, as it is detailed currently in your application. Now, that may be something the advisory committee has revealed for itself. If not, then I'm concerned about the due diligence of the information you've been provided through that examination, even before it's reached your desk. So it appears that the organization is not licensed in the city of Moab as a business. The address at five oh nine East Center is actually an R-two-zoned area in the city of Moab, which is a residential-only zone, and that belongs to, I believe, Kent Cricket Green, maybe Amos C. Willison. And maybe they're renting to Mark Pett, who is the chief officer for Moab Red Rock Roundup. And so then the question becomes, are they renting? And if not, or if they are, either way, is, has this R-two-zoned residence acquired a home occupation permit in the business that is proposed to be taking place there? Now, as a citizen, I can grandma for that information. As a council, as a commission, you might be able to access that just through channels between, relationships between city, county, and organized government. Mark Pett himself resides in Kaseville, Utah, yet lists himself as a chief officer at the res, at this residence of five oh nine East Center in Moab, Utah. So it appears that a noncompliant business organization, even though it's an LLC.
Jane, you're, you're at a three minutes.
Oh.
You, you can, you can finish up real quick, or since.
Thank you very much. So potentially you're reviewing a noncompliant business. It's an LLC. There's exposure and liability to the county for moving forward in my non-lawyer opinion on that, but I am an LLC. I'm a BLLC as a business owner myself. I understand the limitations of liability on that. And so if this applicant wishes to be taken seriously by the county in a very serious process that you've established, maybe they should become compliant with the local laws that we have for business.
Okay, I, I think we're good, Jane. Thank you very much. The next woman, I, I can't read that with the hand raised to the corner. Tori.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking comments at this time about this event. I'm a council member in the town of Castle Valley and going over, I know I, I sent you a letter earlier about the short timeframe in which we were even made aware of the event. This afternoon, I was looking at the application, and one of the questions was, will this event impact any public street or roadway? And they stated, no. I have lived out here for thirty years, and I can tell you every event that you have out here impacts traffic. And for them to say, no, they won't be impacting traffic when they have seven hundred and fifty participants, I would say at least, a lot of these people like to drive themselves, so that could be three hundred, four hundred ATVs on the river road. That is impacting traffic. It's impacting traffic in Moab. It's impacting traffic, and for them to, to say that, that it isn't is ridiculous. Back to the application, you know, the county attorney even said, why aren't we denying this? You know, it's obviously a hot, high impact, and other people have gone through your new portal. There should be no problem with them putting their application in on time. I appreciate you taking my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tori.
I'll, I'll go back to the chamber. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to come forward at this time and be heard? All right, I don't see anyone there, so I'll go back to the Zoom. Anyone else on Zoom? I see anybody. Yeah, if you're on Zoom and you want to be heard, just use the hand symbol. Okay, I'll go to the chamber one more time, and we'll get going. Anyone else want to come up? Citizen to be heard? All right, we will move on then to our presentations, and our first presentation is on the Department of Wildlife Resources, DWR Annual Pelt Payment and Update on DWR's Activities Within the County, and we have Chris Wood, DWR Regional Supervisor today. Hi, Chris, welcome, please. In the middle, yeah, it would be great. Thank you.
I always make him come so that I get to visit with them.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Chris Wood. I'm the regional supervisor for the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources for the southeastern region. And most years, I think every year I come and deliver, formally give you our pelt payment. So our pelt payment is payment in lieu of taxes. It's for the land that we own here in Grand County, and we own two significant areas of land. One is the Nash Wash Wildlife Management Area, also called the Cunningham Ranch. So in the South Bookcliffs area, it's just off the bluffs there, so a winter range. It's an old historic orange ranch. We own that piece of land. It is about eleven hundred acres. And then we also own half of the Scott and Norma Mathis and Wetlands Preserve here in Moab. We own the northern half. The Nature Conservancy owns kind of the southern half. We really manage it as one big wetland preserve together as a partnership, so. We own those two pieces of property. We own them for wildlife and wildlife habitats and for recreation that is compatible with wildlife and maintaining high quality wildlife habitats. The, the check that I have today is for four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. The money to be used to pay this health payment comes from sportsmen and hunters and fishermen, and their license dollars goes to pay for these payment in lieu of taxes throughout the state. And, and these lands are for wildlife enthusiasts, nature watchers, wildlife watchers, but also for hunters and fishing as well. You know, just highlight a few things we're doing in our, and some partnerships we have with the county as the agency. For years, we had Officer Adam Mollerstein live in the community and work with the other law enforcement agencies so well. He moved to Colorado, so we're looking at filling his position. We do have somebody, but he, that person won't be in that role in Moab until about a year. We did some training, we just hired them, we got them, get them through post, we get them trained, but in about a year from now, we will have an officer in Moab to work all of Grand County. Until then, we have officers in Price, in Carving County, in Emery County, and also in San Juan County. Those try to fill that void and patrol and serve and work here in Grand County. So we appreciate the partnership with Sheriff's Office and all the other law enforcement officers here in this area that works so well for our conservation officers and do so much for wildlife. We need them. We have a lot of great partnerships, the PLM, the Forest Service, State Lands, Forest Fire City Lands, a lot of nonprofit groups here in the area that we work together on habitat restoration work with. We do low land, stream, riparian work, all the way up to high elevation, acid and work restoring water sets. We're doing habitat restoration work and trying to restore water sheds through a program called the Watershed Restoration Initiative. So all these partnerships come together every year. We pool, we pool our resources and our money, and we do landscape size habitat and watershed work to improve the watersheds for wildlife, for cattle grazing, for just holistic land health. So we do a lot of great things with our county partnerships as well, and these people that live in this county. We're working on a community archery range. Hopefully that can get back going in the near future, and that's a great partner we have with the county. Maybe I'll also mention, we're also doing a study in the valley. Chronic wasting disease is a disease that deer carry, and it's a concern of ours. Statewide, the prevalence is very, very low, but it is in Ushaw throughout the state. The highest levels of chronic waste disease are actually on the west house. And
In the whole state?
In the whole state. The highest levels are here in the south, and we believe that the high, even higher than the souths are the Moab Valley, deer in Moab Valley. And so if you've seen us out the last few weeks, we're trying to put ten GPS collars on deer throughout this valley to see how they interact with some of the migrating deer that come down from the mountain. So we're trying to see whether there's any interaction. If there is interaction, it'd be more concerning for us because we believe that the prevalence of CWD is higher in the Moab Valley than is the migrating population of cells. So we do a lot of testing, but every time deer hunter harvests deer on the west house, we try to get samples, we test for, test positive, and let that hunter know. And so, yeah, it's an active research project we have around that area. That's not much. Other than that, I maybe I'll mention just lastly that we have a lot of snowfall throughout the state, which is a great thing. It's also means at this time of year, the deer and the elk are really stressed out. And in order to help out the herds, our director implemented a shed closure until May first. What does that mean? Well, deer and elk, male deer and elk lose their antlers every year, and it's a very popular sport in Utah to find those antlers that, that animals naturally shed. And so it used to be that you went online to class, and if you took this online class, you could get a certificate, you could go shed hunting. That's a very popular thing, but in order to kind of protect the deer and the elk that are wintering and are sensitive this time of year and are even under more stress because they could be snowfall, that shed closure is in place on all lands throughout the town until May first. So I think that's all I have. We appreciate your partnership, and before I leave, I'll drop off this check, and thanks for all your help and your support.
And I might add to, you know, with wintering deer and elk right now, like six, being on six or going over Fish Lake, you just have to be, they are just pushed right down next to the road right now. It is, it's really rough, and it's rough on wildlife, and it's rough on you. So just be really, really cognizant of that.
Yeah, if you've driven Highway Six, I apologize, it looks terrible.
Yeah, I know.
They have their competition to pick up the road field, and they have it in a few weeks, so it looks really bad, but it's, it's a result of a heavy snowfall, push those animals towards the roads, and they're dying at a greater rate than normal. So we need the snowfall, but it comes with some struggles. Yeah.
Any, any other questions for Chris from the commissioners? All right, well, thanks for coming, Chris, and thanks for bringing a check. It's always, always welcome.
That's all my money. Those were all my fees that I paid over last week.
All right, our next presentation, we have a present, a developer presentation on affordable, affordable housing, and we have Hooper Knowlton here. Come on up, Hooper.
Thank you.
My name is Hooper Knowlton. I'm a affordable housing and apartment developer based out of Salt Lake City. We have acquired some property here in the county and had an opportunity to meet with Elise Martin and Jenna Gorme in discussing opportunities and the need for affordable housing here in Grand County and also in the city of Moab. So we've prepared a quick presentation. There is an embedded video of seven minutes within that presentation. Then I'll continue with the presentation and answer some of the issues that we outlined in this handout and so forth. Grand County's been discovered, and affordable housing in this community is critical.
Technology is good when it works.
So maybe we should just proceed without the video. Yeah, Hooper, would you be prepared to?
Yep.
Yeah, we got a speech.
We got a stream crash.
Yeah, we can go beyond that. Hello, my name is Hooper Knowlton. And this is my stuff to build. We are the Knowlton Group and the developers of affordable luxury apartments. We want to take you on a tour today and show you what we have developed here at Burke Hill Apartments Home and other apartments you're getting advantage that we sell us along the long avenue. This is our club room at Burke Hill. This is the time and time of year we provide supply in everyone in our affordable communities. Bring commercial break playground equipment for children, the outdoor barbecues and kitchens that are continually used by our tenants and pools and spas. These are standard features that we provide in every one of our affordable apartments. This is a standard one bedroom unit that we develop throughout all of our large communities. Each apartment features granite or quartz countertops, stainless steel fixtures, stainless steel sinks and shaker full height cabins. Here at the Knowlton Group, we take our stewardship for the environment very seriously. All of our affordable housing projects are built to the enterprise green energy standard. All of our units use low water consumption and low energy consumption. Additionally, during the construction of the project, we divert up to ninety-two percent of our construction waste away from landfill and directly into recycled byproduct. Whenever we're looking at a potentially real estate project, we evaluate it like we're looking at three-legged stool. Those three legs that we look at are the following. Number one, is it physically possible to build the building we need to build on the, on the piece of real estate we've identified? Number two, is it legally permissible, meaning do the zoning laws, local and state and federal regulations allow us to build the building that we're wanting to build? Number three, is the project going to be financially feasible? Not just for us as the developer, but for our investors, for the banks, for the city and for anyone who has a vested interest in the project. So my father, who is also my business partner, has forty-five year history in real estate development. And during that time, he has developed an expertise in ground fill remediation. What that means is he takes highly contaminated pieces of real estate which are slanted areas of the community. They're not generating any income or tax base for the local municipality and it's kind of an eyesore for the community and the neighbors. He comes in, he has relationships with the Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Environmental Quality and other regulators. And collaboratively finds a way to rehabilitate the property, reposition it, so it becomes an economic asset for the community. First and foremost, we strive to be good neighbors. And so when we come into an area and we want to build a project, one of the first things we do is talk to the surrounding neighbors and community. We find out what's important to them, what are their pressure points, what are their needs, what are their wants? Then we talk to the planning commission, we talk to the city council members, we talk to the mayors, and then we talk to the city staff and county staff to find out what's a way that we can collaboratively come together, take the best ideas from all these different players and build an economically viable project, not just for ourselves, but for the community. Each of the affordable housing projects we build are built to an enterprise green and energy star building standard. What that means, they're built in a green environmentally friendly manner. They use less water, they are more energy efficient, they have better insulation and better windows, they last longer. And because of that, we've won awards from various communities, various cities. And we've also won tax credit allocations to build affordable housing projects. Over the years, we have built in Midvale, Murray, Mill Creek, Leighton, August and a number of other cities and counties across the state of Utah. There's something gratifying about going to work every day and seeing your project and the people that live there and the change you've made in their lives where people have had housing insecurity and instability. And they are now living in a place that they can afford, that's safe, that's clean. And it's changing lives. They're progressing and becoming a more stable contributing member of society because they have housing stability from the start. Having spent forty-five years in the real estate development business and having developed not only single family homes, residential building lots, neighborhood shopping centers and an auto mall, having developed nearly a thousand affordable units over the last ten years. With that background, we understand the needs of affordable tenants. We understand the type of amenities that are attractive to tenants. And we try to provide those in a safe, secure setting. Housing stability is one of the key factors in being able to have financial security. An example of that type of situation is an individual who for three years prior to moving into Burke Hill Apartments Homes was living in his car. His children finally came to him and said, Dad, you can't continue to live like this. He was a veteran. He went to the Veterans Administration's Housing Assistance and came to Burke Hill ten years ago, found greater stability, employment. Having developed the number of real estate projects in Utah, in Nevada, in California. This particular type of development is most satisfying. And to see those families flourish in that type of atmosphere and succeed financially is a very rewarding part of this real estate development effort. So these are some very quick pictures that I'm going to go through of projects that we have developed, the kind of features and amenities that are provided. They give an upscale feel to affordable housing. Fitness equipment, the type of construction, the type of community that we put together. We have full kitchens in all of our amenity spaces so that there can be parties and family parties and Super Bowl parties and all those types of situations. Billiards. This type of atmosphere is well accepted by each of our tenants. And these things become critical in providing that stability we talked about and the affordability. Outdoor barbecues, outdoor kitchens, professional outdoor playground equipment for children. These are all standard features. This is affordable housing. This is affordable luxury housing. The tenant from the homeless shelter with a twenty-five percent AMI and the doctor in residency at IMC Hospital in Salt Lake City live next to one another, have the same amenities, have the same features. There's no distinction in what they enjoy in their apartments. These are financed through low income tax credits, liptack. It is administered by the Utah Housing Corporation. Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, our company secured more federal tax credits for affordable housing than the other, than any other developer in the state of Utah. Program again is administered by Utah Housing through guidelines and regulations set down by HUD. The qualifications for occupancy is based on income defined as a percentage of the area median income. And to succeed in getting those tax credit awards, the average AMI for a projected project needs to be forty-three to forty-five percent. Otherwise, you cannot compete and win the tax credit awards. And we have won tax credit awards every year we've competed. The following are excerpts from a recently completed market study on Grand County affordable rental housing. Historically, residents and employees in Grand County have faced housing supply and affordability issues. The imbalance between supply and demand for housing in Grand County results from the following factors: low household income, high housing costs, the influence of external market demand, the conditions of existing housing supply and restrictive land use regulations. I have handed this out in more detail on the third page of the handout. But because housing in Moab and the area and low income households may be forced to live in less than adequate housing, pay or dis- pay a disproportionate share of their incomes to live in adequate housing or commute ever increasing distances to their jobs from local housing outside the Moab area. These circumstances harm the county's ability to provide high levels of service, attain goals articulated in the general plan and preserve high quality of life for residents. This comes from Western State's multifamily, the leading source for data and information on apartments throughout the state. What is contributing to the housing shortage? Restricted land regulations and design guidelines plus the temporary the, the term is STR, temporary.
Short-term rentals.
Yes, short-term rentals. Yeah, excuse me. Thank you for pulling me out. Appreciate it. Short-term rentals are a major issue in this community. And I'm sure I'm not the first to mention that. Individuals who list their properties to generate additional income or provide services to out-of-town districts, this has impacted the housing supply and affordability. As of twenty twenty-one, approximately nineteen point three percent of all housing units in Grand County was in a short-term rental situation. There were seven hundred and eighty-one short-term rentals in Grand County in nineteen nineteen. Existing rental housing deficits support the conclusion that the future demand for rental housing is expected to exceed the above stated numbers. What can be done to encourage affordable housing and modify county design and guidelines for multi-family housing? Increase the density from thirty-five acres to the acre to forty-five acres. Increase the height from forty-five feet to forty-two feet. For affordable housing, relax the parking requirement to one point one stalls per apartment. Modify your setbacks and eliminate step-back design, which is extremely expensive and ineffective in utilizing the efficiency of properties. These kinds of things will help. This are, these are examples of three-story walk-up affordable housing projects. So that you get an understanding as to the mention and the massing of these type of three-story projects. And these projects can be designed to allow a density up to forty-five acres to the acre. There are ways to solve the issues and put in place design guidelines to promote affordable housing again through greater density, increasing some seven feet, the height. The height of thirty-five feet is a nineteen sixties, nineteen seventy concept design line. That's when most homes had eight-foot ceilings. Today, in all of our units, we have nine-foot ceilings. And we put in a open, an eighteen-inch open web truss so that all of the mechanical and all of the heating vents and the plumbing and so forth is in the ceiling and not fur down into the apartment. It gives a more spacious and luxury feel. Having developed a thousand units and parked them, the parking ratio for affordable housings and those tenants do not have as many cars because of their income restriction and levels as market rate tenants do. And therefore, we have found that the parking ratio is more appropriate at one point one rather than one point two, three or one point five. Setback requirements can gobble up a lot of land. And yet we can provide beautiful landscaping within fifteen-foot setbacks. And I've touched on the issue before of the step back in design in the second, third levels, which is just a, almost a cost prohibitive design element when we're attempting to develop affordable housing. So thank you. I apologize for the technical side that there was a glitch. I appreciate those who came to my rescue. But these are things that if they can be implemented in, implemented in this county will act to provide affordable housing. You have issues, you are well aware of those issues. When I talk with people who own hotels and restaurants and they are telling me they can't find employees. And those who have employees have gone out in the market and bought duplexes and fourplexes to own, to house their own employees. And when I talk with the hotel operator who says, I'm in a mess today. Two days ago, I had six people that were maids and workforce leave because they're tired of living in their cars. There is a way to provide upscale affordable housing in this community. And it needs to be implemented and through the low-income housing tax credits that comes through the state. And with that, this deficit that you're facing of some five hundred-plus affordable housing units, and I'm not talking about marketing, I'm talking about affordable. These are people that are your workforce. These are the servers and the workers in your restaurants, in your hotels, in your recreational businesses. They need that type of support and help. And implementing these type of design standards will go a long way in being able to alleviate that problem. Thanks for letting me have a few minutes of your time tonight.
All right. Thank you, Hooper. Do we have questions for Hooper from any of the commissioners? Yes, Mike. In speaking of low income, what number range are you talking about? Do we, do you? Yes, I know it'd be a guesstimate, but do we have a?
Yes, so affordable housing is based upon income. And so the income levels to win affordable housing tax credits, as I mentioned, need to be, be at that weighted average between forty-three and forty-five percent AMI. We will start with twenty-five percent AMI, who are people that have almost come out of a homeless situation. And that tenant, as compared to a market rate tenant, a market rate one-bedroom apartment, and I'm using examples in Salt Lake County, that apartment will rent for eleven hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. Twenty-five percent AMI affordable tenant can rent that apartment for four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. So there is a two-thirds differential for that AMI. As the AMI increases, the rent increases. But at a fifty percent or sixty percent AMI, they're still renting that apartment that rents at market rate for twelve hundred a month, they're still renting that in the seven seventy-five, eight and a quarter range. So there's a dramatic decrease in rent through the low-income housing tax credit program. And you're saying to yourself, well, how do you do that? How does that happen? It's section forty-two of the Internal Revenue Service. Banks have to comply in states and communities where they work and reinvest their profits into those communities. And most of them do that through the equity investments in affordable housing. Today, ninety-five percent of all affordable housing in the United States is done through the low-income housing tax credit. And banks invest the equity into the projects for tax credits they receive from the Internal Revenue Service. And as such, From the Internal Revenue Service and as such. They lower the amount of equity, not equity, because they lower the amount of loan. That you have to have as a developer and therefore that lower loan and lower costs are passed on. To lower rents to debts. And that is the difference anywhere from two thirds to a third rent lower than what would be market rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, great, appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, well, Hooper, if you would, the county attorney has a question for you.
So Hooper, are there audits that are required to ensure that rates stay the same?
The state has the right to audit you every year. The tax credit investor has the right to audit your books twice a year. The state, after the first audit and you're doing what the state requires you to do. Typically, they don't audit every year, but they do audit every third, third year. The tax credit investor who has invested the equity, the bank, they audit you twice a year. And they're, they're pretty diligent about their auditing. So as a result. When a tenant, let, let's take an ex- a quick example. We have a tenant that comes in, he's single. Uh, he qualifies, uh, he doesn't make more than twenty seven thousand nine hundred a year. And he moves in under a one bedroom affordable situation. He goes to school, he finishes school, he gets a job and he starts making more income. And he graduates out of the affordable rental pool. And now he has to pay market rate, but he's got a job that's paying him now forty five or fifty thousand a year. And that's the success story that we'd like to see. And we have a number of people in our projects that have succeeded in that way. But to answer your question, Steve, we are audited at least twice a year. And the qualifications for a tenant to move in to an affordable project. Are just a step below the qualifications to uh, secure mortgage on a home. It's rigorous, uh, income has to be verified, uh, tax records have to be verified. Uh, criminal records are looked at and verified. And previous credit history in renting are looked at. And with that, we find the tenants to be very appreciative of the kind of product that we have provided. And to be very candid, my affordable tenants take better care of their units than my market rate tenants. And that's ground buckets. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Hooper. Uh, Mary.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I wanted to uh, thank Lori and Scott McFarland because they were the ones that uh. Gave me the information to get a hold of Hooper and I very much appreciated it. Jacques, myself, uh, Steve and Bill all had the opportunity to uh. Take a tour of his apartments when we were in Salt Lake. And they are as lovely as they appeared in the film. And uh, we, you know, it would be a place that anyone like a doctor or someone that. Wanted to rent at full market price would want to do because they're lovely. And so, thank you, and thank you to the McFarlands.
And Evan and Kevin, if your time allows, to come up to Salt Lake. We will clear our schedule at any point in time. To let you touch and feel and have a more hands on sense of what we develop as affordable housing. Years ago, affordable housing in the sixties and seventies took on a very poor. Persona among communities. But when you see the things that we're talking about, that can be developed in an affordable atmosphere. Uh, the perception starts to change. And if you have the time, we will clear our decks to tour you of the projects that we've talked about today. Thank you.
All right, um, we do not have, let's see, that's our last presentation today. We don't have any department or agency reports at this time. So we will uh, move on to approval of meeting minutes from our February seventh meeting, which are in the packet. Anyone care to make a motion?
Um, I move to approve the February seventh minutes.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield, any discussion of those minutes? All right, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of approval of minutes, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're on to ratification of bills and general reports. Uh, start off with ratification of bills and um. Our total bills this period are one million four hundred fifty nine thousand three hundred eighty nine dollars and eighty cents. Uh, our total payroll is three hundred forty thousand dollars, five hun- three hundred forty thousand five hundred twenty eight dollars. Eighty four cents for a total bills and payroll of uh, one million seven hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars sixty four cents.
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second? All right, thanks, Trish. Uh, motion to ratify bills by Commissioner McGann, second by Commissioner Hadeen, any discussion of bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of ratifying bills, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Uh, we're up to commission member disclosures, does any members of the commission have anything that they would uh. Like to disclose about any of the items in our agenda today? Great, then we'll move on to uh, general commission reports and future considerations. And I'll, uh, if you're ready, Mary, I'll change it up and go in the other direction this, this meeting.
Get ready, second I have it written here. On uh, Wednesday, the eighth and Thursday, this uh. But six, it had to been the ninth. Uh, at, uh, we went to the Capitol, uh, Jacques and myself. And we met with Mike Maurer from the governor's office. Uh, we met with our representative Lyman three times. We met with Jesse Martenson of the Audit Office. And we should have the results of our office at August, at first of.
First week in April.
March, and it looks like we're going to come out looking good, which felt really nice. We met with Senator Hincon, Representative Carl Albrecht, Senator Vickers, Senator Owens. And we went to Lyman's Yellowhead Caucus and the UAC Legislative Committee meetings. It was a very busy uh, couple days. On June second, uh, no, on uh, February fourteenth, we went to the Committee of Revenue and Taxations. It was a difficult meeting, we, they were talking about House Bill four sixteen. Which uh, is the bill that gives us the opportunity to. Uh, use part of our transient room tax on diversifying and building our economy. It was uh, frustrating because in the presentations, there were statements stated that were incorrect. And we weren't oftentimes given the opportunity to correct those statements. Uh, for instance, Lori McFarland made a statement in reference to Grand County's increasing its TRCC tax. Approximately six years ago. And uh, she said the tax was raised to punish business, businesses like her. Well, nothing could be further from the truth. When we looked at raising that, uh, we were, Grand County was in a tough situation. We were hemorrhaging uh, from losing our employees, especially in the Sheriff's Department. We couldn't keep employees, we had to find a way to raise wages, we didn't want to raise uh, property tax. So we found that there was a portion, we hadn't reached the max on the TRCC tax, which comes from tourists. Uh, pay it, we thought, well, this would be much better than raising taxes. So that's why we raised those taxes, it had nothing to do with punishing anyone or any businesses. It was to protect our community from having a property tax raise. Uh, we also, Michael List, uh, disparaged many of our local businesses. It was heartbreaking, yeah, said things that were completely untrue. And I want to apologize to those businesses that they were presented in a light of that fashion. And it was frustrating because we were not given the opportunity to correct the errors. So that was a very difficult meeting and the committee chose to take away our right to use. Transit room tax on diversifying our economy. Which, if it goes through the Senate and passes the Senate, we'll have to reopen our uh. Budget and reevaluate it because we won't have the funds to spend the way we thought we'd would. So that was very discouraging. We got back on the same day and I tra- I went to the Travel Council Advisory Board. And uh, they love communication, gave a presentation on how they're going to improve the data that we're going to receive. Uh, market campaign details for Moab and possibly for the state on targeted markets. And timing as to when these ads are presented. And they will also be giving us better metrics on occupancy by the month. Uh, so that was, you know, so I'm really excited that we're going to have access to that type of details. And uh, that was probably the highlight, you know, the most important thing that went on in that meeting. They also talked about March second from twelve to four. Uh, in the afternoon, there was going to be the grand opening of the Moab Community Resource Center. So I hope a lot of us can make it to that, it's very exciting. And I know Bill worked hard on that, so thank you, Bill. Uh, on the sixteenth, I did a HOSU meeting and. HOSU is back up to a full staff, uh, they've hired Elena as their new administrative assistant. And Elena for their assistant admin- administrator assistants. Uh, they submitted our CDBG uh, application for track E at Aurora Crossing. And it looks very likely that they're going to be funded. All Crown properties are full. Uh, Cinema Court for vacancy, uh, four vacant, three bedrooms and one bedroom. Various stages of work is needed and working through a waitlist to fill the units. The waitlist for one bedroom is fifty three people, uh, for two bedroom, fifty two, for three bedroom, thirty three, thirty eight. So it's very, you know, that's big numbers, heartbreaking. Uh, maps, uh, two vacant units, both one bedroom, one should be filled today and the other is ongoing. Uh, they're dealing with some issues in the department that has to be fixed before they can. Move forward with putting someone in that, in that unit. The waitlist is for one bedroom is fifty eight and two bedroom is twenty two. Wingate, uh, Village two, uh, three bedroom units available, working through waitlist. And the self-help at Aurora, uh, Phase one housing, there are nine. And in Phase two housing, there will be ten built and in Phase three, there will be ten. So that's exciting and that is happening as we speak. So that is my report, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mary, and Mike.
My report much shorter, uh, I was actually out of town and have nothing to report on.
All right, Trish.
Okay, so some quick things I will try to run through, sorry. Um, I went to the Grand County Local Homeless Council meeting in the stats. Um, in January, there was a hundred sixteen individuals seeking services, fifty five of them. Literally homeless and sixty six in imminent threat of homelessness, that trend continues. Um, I went on the eighth of February to the Home Building Journey Workshop. Um, Planning and Zoning put this together to identify steps in the building processes, barriers and solutions. It was extremely well attended, um, I think there was some very constructive criticism. And hopefully, or constructive feedback that we can take and, and improve on. Unfortunately, there was a little bit of the opposite and that's, that's difficult. You know, because I think constructive feedback goes a long ways in helping us make our processes better, so I'll just state that. Um, on the thirteenth, and these are just asides, I had a meeting with quite a few different entities and agencies about. Possible trail improvements to the Sago Canyon Trailhead, if you haven't been there. Um, you go to the very top of Sago Canyon and it reaches a roadless area and that trailhead is sometimes a hot mess. Because it's um, mostly back country horsemen and so it's trucks and trailers. And, and so we're just looking at with a few different agencies improving that trailhead so that it's a little bit easier to navigate. Um, I went to the Planning Commission on the thirteenth, we're going to hear about uh, the Manderfield subdivision, final plat extension. Um, we debriefed the housing workshop and we did talk about the future land use map. Which is a really great place for people to give feedback if they want to look at zoning changes and density changes. So I'll just state that, that people should really look there. Um, I went to a Grand and San Juan County Conservation District Working Group. And that was really fun to have those counties come together and realize like, we have a lot of the same agendas and a lot of the same issues. So that was really exciting. And then Chris already mentioned, um, actually just a couple of days, I met with some division employees out at OSTA. Because we're talking about putting in an archery range. So um, the division is working closely with Grand County and maybe some other entities. And see how much money I can squeeze out of people to possibly put that in at OSTA. That's it. Oh, oh, and right now, I just, I did want to state that right now. Um, the Senate Judiciary Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Committee is going on and we have House Bill. Uh, or sorry, Senate Bill two fifty four, um, that is in committee right now. And that was put together by our Lake County Attorney and Colleen McGee. It's called drug induced homicide, that was prompted by the death of a young man in our community. His family came forward and really wanted to do something, so Christina, Colleen, Steve White. Um, Sheriff Meacham worked together to put this House Bill and so we'll see where it goes, but it's in committee right now.
All right, thank you, Trish, uh, Bill.
Mine's a little shorter, um, I. Met with Bill Jackson separately from a meeting that I also attended with Kevin Walker out there. But it was in regards to the B and C funds that the. It's Senate Bill one seven five and that seems to be moving through, I know Chris Baird sent out an email. But I didn't see anybody else on the. The um, call this morning, but that was with our, not our lobbyist, UAC's lobbyist. And he gave an update on that and so that money looks like it's going to happen this time. Um, it's been a little bit of a roller coaster up and down and that will increase funds to Mr. Jackson's department. For the B and C road work and it would be an ongoing, be an initial payout that would be divided up. I think the amount of counties that are in line for the forty million now are up to ten or twelve. And then there would, that would be divvied up and then it will be ongoing, uh, some additional funds on a yearly basis moving forward.
Is that a rural counties building up?
It is, that's a rural county, so, and it seems like they, um, keep enlarging the amount of rural counties into it. Probably to help get support for it to pass would be my guess. And then um, I did attend a meeting with Kevin and he, he'll fill on on that one, I was there just as a participant. Um, I also worked with Phil Lyman a little bit at Jacques's request. After the meeting that they had all up there, um, I also watched that meeting and I have a little bit different take than Mary on it. Um, I will say that whether Lori's discrepancies are on or off aren't really the issue. I think that Mr. Garn came across fairly strong in a very short and blunt statement that he made. And I believe it just really involves around the fact that if we're going to. Make policy or change policies around any user group, whether it's the hotel groups or otherwise. That we really need to involve them and I think that this bill is sort of a pushback. Because we haven't involved them when we changed the spending tactics on the promotion side of the. The money that we receive here, so it's um, it just, I think. Good idea for all of us to use, utilize those user groups and include them when we want to make some kind of a law. Or pass something that affects them. So that's all I've got for this one.
Okay, thank you, Bill, Evan?
I met with the Boundary Commission, um, it was mostly around electing officers for the year, setting a schedule for uh, what's upcoming. But there were some uh, talks about possible annexations into the city later in the year. And if those were contested, what that would do for the Boundary Commission. Also met with the Canyonlands Healthcare Special Service District. It was the usual administrators report, financials, paying bills and the like. And we signed a letter regarding the 2022 audit and getting that underway. The EMS district, we just, our separate committees met. So the evaluation for the director was working on that some. And then the cemetery district is business as usual. So things are looking good out at both the cemeteries in the valley here. And if you haven't driven by there, there's been a lot of recovery from the floods. And so thanks for Bill also for helping with some of that out there at that intersection. So kudos.
Um, in recent weeks, I attended a meeting of the Grand County Transportation Special Service District that Bill alluded to. One of the highlights of that meeting was Bill Jackson discussing, you know, possible, taking a fresh look at the prioritization of our drainage projects. So hopefully Bill will give a presentation to the commission at some point about that. But I, you know, that's a very long-term project, but I think it is important to reevaluate from time to time, just how, which of the projects we do first. Also went to a council on aging meeting. That group fell dormant during COVID, but now they're they're back running with new energy. One thing I did notice there is all the terms are the same because I guess there was a discontinuity. And so we might want to think about throwing in some shorter terms next time we do appointment so that we can get them back on a staggered schedule. There seemed to be a lot of energy. They want to work with the county for electric vehicle charging stations, you know, getting grants to do that. And there was a lot of discussion about how to get more seniors involved in the activities and more socializing. And I'm hoping in the future they can help us come up with ideas for, you know, but how we can improve the services that Grand County provides to seniors.
Thanks, Kevin. All right. And as, see, Mary already said, we spent quite a bit of time on Capitol Hill and Bill also mentioned. And I'll echo what Bill said about working with diverse groups. I very much agree with that. But I would also like to point out that when the original bill was created to change the way the TRT spending could be made, Green County, Chris Baird in particular, did work with the hotel lobbyist pretty extensively on that. But it is, I think, a great idea to include as many people in these discussions as possible. And it was quite an education. It was my first time up on the hill and it's different up there. So anyway, I missed, because we did that work, I did miss a few of my meetings. I missed a TSSD meeting unfortunately. I missed a Motorized Trail Committee meeting and a Trail Mix meeting. I did, Chair of Trail Mix, Colin Topper, did reach out after the meeting and said that they had a very robust discussion about one of the agenda items that we have, Agenda Item 3, about the Raze Grant, went to Trail Mix and that's concerns the grants that we're looking at procuring for paving all our portions of Sand Flats Road. And he just wanted that to be known. The Trail Mix did discuss that a lot and I can speak to that more when I get to that agenda item. I was able to attend a Chamber of Commerce retreat, the annual retreat there. It was a great event and tribute was paid to the late Matt Neeson, who was a member of that board. And we very much miss him on that board. We, in that retreat, we did review bylaws which hadn't been reviewed in 10 years. So it's like kind of a 10-year looking at those. And we went through quite a few of those. We didn't approve anything. I think they were actually going to attorney to be looked at before we'd approve them at the next chamber meeting. Also discussed changing the board terms from three to four years. And Lonnie Campbell and Shaylee Bryant were reelected as president and vice president of the chamber. So congrats to those guys. I think this is the third year that they'll both each be in those positions. Then that night, I attended a Museum of Moab first meeting of the year and we discussed some awesome new programs. The Museum of Moab is killing it right now. They're, they're, they're just going full guns, creating great new programs. The two that were most exciting to me is that they're going to be doing a kind of a small tour of historic Moab on Thursdays at 10:00 AM, starting March 2nd, all the way through October of this year. And it's going to be called Livestock Built This City. So you can kind of go register with the museum and then, and then take your tour with a, with the museum personnel and it'll go through the, it's going to be Thursdays at 10:00 AM from March 2nd all the way through. I'm not sure if it's the end of October, but I just had in my notes, October. So that, I think it's a really cool opportunity to get to know our town and for visitors to come to Moab too and check out the museum and learn more about historic Moab. I think that's an awesome thing that museums is going to be providing. And then another really cool thing that Moab's putting on is there's going to be International Heritage Breeds Week is May 15th to the 21st. And the Museum of Moab is going to participate in that with programs. But they have gotten the world famous Temple Brandon, who is quite well-known in lots of circles. But she will be coming and doing a presentation here in Moab. And it's going to be the week, and it's to be determined the actual date, but it's going to be the week of May 15th to May 21st. So that's, 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 she's world-class and famous and she's a writer and has worked with.
It was made about her and it's worth watching.
Yeah. So that's, that's really cool. So again, kudos to Museum of Moab is doing awesome. And also a new president was elected of the Board of Directors and that is Cindy Hartgrave. So congratulations to Cindy. And I do have a future consideration. So our next, our next meeting is due to be on March 7th. And there is, we are not going to be able to have a quorum here. I've just found out. A few of us will be out of town. Mary and myself will be in Washington. Bill will be out of the country and Evan will not be in town. So we have a, in our bylaws, we need a quorum at our anchor location. We discussed this briefly before, but I hadn't realized that four of us would be out of town. So some thoughts on that are potentially postponing the meeting to the next week, which would mean probably a meeting on the 13th, 14th of March, which would be a Monday or a Tuesday. And then we'd have our regular commission meeting on the 21st. Or the other option would just be to cancel that meeting and going just to one meeting in March on the 21st. I guess there is maybe another option that we've thought of and that would be holding a special meeting of this commission next week or soon to change the bylaws to allow for a so we wouldn't need a quorum at the anchor location here, but could achieve a quorum with folks tuning in on Zoom. So I thought, we didn't have that as a discussion item on our agenda, but I thought now would probably be a good time to have that discussion. And I would solicit your all's opinions on that. I actually haven't, Mike, well, are you planning on being here? And Trish also, correct, as well as Kevin, I think would be.
The hard thing of having a meeting, which is four, is if one person disagrees, no matter what item fails.
Yeah.
It's, you know.
Is it a heavy meeting?
I don't think we're sure yet. This meeting is, I think we have like, what do we have, 15 items on this? So this one is, Mallory, do you want to, do you want to weigh in on this?
I was just going to say, if you were to consider changing something, it would actually just be, we have an electronic meeting resolution and want it be the bylaws themselves.
Okay.
Reference to the resolution.
Evans?
So how many, how many people will be able to attend by Zoom? You said you would be able to.
I'm most likely able to attend by Zoom, but anyone else?
I should be able to. I don't know if it'd be right at 4 o'clock.
Right. So it'd be five people total with three here if we don't.
If we wanted to, yeah, if we wanted to go in that direction, yeah. And again, I might also be a little bit late on that, looking at my schedule. We're, Mary and I are going to be in Washington DC working on the hill that day.
That's what I was going to ask. Is, are we looking one week ahead? Everyone's back?
A week ahead, a week ahead, I believe, six of us would be back, right? So we could do that. Then it would stack meetings up in successive weeks. I don't know if that's necessarily something to avoid or.
Or then pushing back was to the 14th was the other option?
Oh, oh, yeah. You mean, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't understand. You meant doing a meeting on Tuesday, the 31st?
No.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I like that idea.
How does that for the administrator workflow? Is it, to me, it seems more preferable to have more people here. And so would pushing a week back be manageable?
Having to have a meeting on the 14th?
And then that would mean, but then that'd be meetings two consecutive weeks. So we'd have that one and then the next week.
Right.
I'm leaning more towards a one-off like that than changing the policy regarding.
Okay. So if we were, so if we were to stack the meetings like that and do one instead of the 7th on the 14th, that we just have to notice it properly? And there's, is there anything else that we'd have to?
We could just notice a cancellation for the standing meeting that would be the 7th and then would notice the other as a special meeting.
Okay. Okay. So I was going to, I'm in favor of change, even if we didn't have this situation coming up. I think it's a good idea to change the policy. It just gives us additional flexibility. Doesn't force us to hold meetings, but you know, it's another option. So, you know, I would suggest whenever we meet next, you know, to get that either electronic meeting ordinance change or bylaws change, whichever it is on the agenda. So that, you know, next time this happens, we'll have more options.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't disagree with you, Kevin. I definitely think that it's very much preferable to have as many people showing up a lot, you know, here as possible. And we really, we really have, this just seems like a perfect storm of convergences of everyone being out of town due to no one's fault. It just, just happened. But yeah, I'd be, we could, we could, we could definitely get that on the agenda and at least, you know, discuss it, bring it as an action item.
I would also be willing to follow. I haven't been keeping track of what's coming down the pipe for future agendas. But if it seems like it's creating an unnecessary amount of extra work to have meetings in two consecutive weeks, if it's postponing to the regular schedule and just canceling this one and not scheduling a special meeting, I would be willing to follow the administrator team's lead on that as well. What's on the agenda?
Yeah, Mike, fill the exact same. Yeah.
I agree.
Yes, Mary?
Yes, because it is incredibly time-consuming for our staff to create the packet, to get everything organized, to also put our departments in a situation where they're going to be two weeks in a row having to get their agendas in at a certain time. So or just do a real easy meeting where we ratify the bills and something like that. But yeah, post cancelling, it would not.
We don't need a consensus to cancel or schedule a special meeting.
I'm not sure how that, how that works. I would guess.
I think we could just post it.
Right. If we can't achieve quorum, then that's kind of a.
Special, if you're asking about a special meeting, I think statute or our bylaws have it set up up where Gabe just has to give you guys the five days' notice. And then we would follow the usual posting.
Right.
So it really seems like cancelling, it would be an easy option, I mean, across the board.
I mean, there may be other time-sensitive things that, so maybe put some feelers out to the department heads and see if there's anything pressing or business that needs to be addressed and.
When, when do we need to post the meeting cancellation by?
I think we can post that at any time. It's just the important part is noticing.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. Okay. So have we decided to, it sounds like folks are leaning towards cancelling is kind of my impression. I could take a straw poll.
I would like to empower the staff to make the call of what's going to be the most useful for county business.
I would say to plan on cancelling it and then we can let you know if things do come up in the next week or so that seem urgent and we could also.
I think that's a good idea. We're going to have to cancel it no matter what. So that's a done deal. And then, and then if we have to call an emergency meeting early, then.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. And that was, so where are we? All right, back to, we're still on commission reports. Okay. And that was the, yeah, that was the end of my, my report. So, well, yeah, we'll move on to elected official reports and I would turn it over to our county attorney, Stephen Stocks.
So since we met last, I also went up to Salt Lake, had the opportunity to experience legislative session. It's interesting. Had the opportunity to sit down with meetings with Jacques, Mary and Bill. We went to a meeting together. That was great. It's very different up at the state. I will, I will say we're kind of a small fish in a big pond up there. And so getting used to saying hi to everybody and going to the meetings, it's, it's really interesting. But at the same time, the, a lot of the legislature is treated kind of like cattle. Like for the Tourism on the Hill Day, they like brought them there with food and then everybody, you know, can talk to them. And so it's just, just so different. But anyways, that was an interesting experience. I have had a few questions and a few things that I'm going to get back to staff and commissioners on. Commissioner Walker and Mallory and I are going to look at doing bylaws and doing a meeting on that. Commissioner McGinn asked, posed a question regarding diversification, if we can do a certain expenditures. And so I look forward to giving reports on that. In my own office, we did have a new hire for the prosecution assistant. His name's Chris Fukushi. He started last week. And we also, I also had the opportunity to meet with the Family Support Center. And I was going to let you know that we're going to have a presentation next time we meet, whenever that is. And they offer wonderful services that a lot of people in the community do not know about, such as respite care. And I'm going to, you know, leave the cliffhanger there, but it's daycare, essentially emergency purposes for daycare. But anyways, also we'll have a presentation next time we meet on water. Previously, we hired a independent contractor, Laurel Hagan. She's finished with her report and I wanted her to have the opportunity to present her findings to the commission. I think it's important for her to do that. Additionally, my staff was out on vacation. They're coming back. So I've been covering court. And then I think that's, everything's good. We did have one more update for the opioid settlement that we got, I think Jacques signed that. We've had some documents ready and I think that'll come back on our next time we meet, whenever that is, to ratify that. There's additional settlement funds that are coming out. I believe that one's with CBS Walmart and a couple other, yeah, larger conglomerates. So all in all, everything is going well and it's exciting as it can be. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. And Gabe, our county clerk.
Thanks, Jacques. So I attended a grandma training that was put on by the State Records Office up in Taylorsville. That was a really beneficial full-day training on that code, every section of that code. The State Records Office Secretary and the Ombudsman were there. And so just getting to know their faces and develop them as contacts. They handle all the appeals of grandma requests. And yeah, I thought that was a really good program and it prompted me to sign up for another training that they're putting on for record and information management. So taking advantage of this even year or odd year, sorry, odd election year to take on some formal training that relates to my office. So that's happy to be taking those opportunities. As far as the legislative, the legislative session, the Clerk Auditor Group were monitoring over 50 bills that relates to either clerk elections or just clerk or auditor duties. Only five of those 50, we're sort of directly taking a position of opposition. There's been a lot of great work done by clerks up there at the Capitol to massage and amend proposed bills to sort of put them in a place to our liking so that we don't have to take a position of opposed. So it's interesting to be able to see that evolution take place. We're focused right now on House Bill 303, which is a bill that would affect voters that are currently in private or withheld status in their registration and how that, how that, how their information is shared with political parties and candidates. And so right now, we're just urging lawmakers to attach a fiscal note to that bill that would fund county election offices to make the proper. Uh, make the proper noticing to those voters, to let them know that they have to reapply for that status if they'd like it. Um, and that proper noticing is really important to all of us uh election officials. Um, and I just got word at the beginning of this meeting that there's a new bill um that was just put forth, House Bill five hundred, five thirty seven. Which would make voters have to opt in to vote by mail, obviously, that would be a really big deal, so I'm gonna be monitoring that closely, I'm sure. Um, lastly, um I've um happy, very happy to announce that I've hired Dana Van Horn as the new clerk deputy in the clerk auditor's office. Um, and so she's um filling the election specialist role that was vacated by Jenna Smith. And you all may know her as the, she's been the manager at Guissa Grandwater and Sewer for many years. Um, so she comes with great experience and a lot of enthusiasm to join our office and she's got familiarity with our accounting software. And also running elections out there for the water district boards, so I think she's going to be a really great asset to the county, it's really uh good news for us. That's all I have.
Yes, question, who's sponsoring House Bill five thirty seven?
See, let's see if it's on my email.
I can look it up, it's okay.
It's a uh Representative Berkland, Kira Berkland.
Great, okay, thanks, Gabe, uh we'll move on to Commission Admin uh Administrator Report, Mallory.
Okay, I will be very quick, I did some of the same things that were reported on by commissioners. Um, but I wanted to quickly give a shout out to Matt, Kenny. Um, and Alicia for the work that was done on our face, our Facebook. On our website redesign, if you haven't seen it, uh check it out, I think it looks great. And if there's any feedback or questions, let us know, but thank you, guys. Um, and then my other thing is I serve on the Community Development Block Grant Rating and Ranking Advisory Committee. Um, and it's tied to what Mary was talking about earlier with Hassoon's application. Um, and so we met for our annual meeting and there were three projects to review. Um, only one was for Grand County and they said it was really an amazing application. And that at working with the state, they had to work to find something that was wrong with it, but it was really exemplary. So that will be fully funded. Great work, Cass.
Great, awesome, good news, yeah, and the website, I, yeah, it looks great, it's it's much more modern, good job, thank you. Yeah, uh Quinn, did you have anything to add to the Commission Administrator Report? Chris, would you like to add anything on the Commission Administrator Report?
No, I think you guys covered it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, um that brings us up to our general business action items. Uh, discussion and consideration of approval, and the first item on our list is item number two. And that is uh additions to the twenty twenty two property tax abatements and cancellations. And we have uh Chris Kaufman on Zoom, all right. All right, Mary Lou. Thank you. Well, well, you got to sit through a very entertaining hour and a half of a commission meeting anyway.
Very interesting, I usually. Man, I don't regret, I would not want to do your job, so thank you, guys. You guys are in a tough position, you guys get kicked off a lot, and I am gonna stick up for you. Um, anyhow, so Chris couldn't be here, my name's Mary Lou and she's Chief Deputy Treasurer. And his motion is to approve, he moves to approve the additional twenty twenty two property tax abatements and canc- cancellations as presented. The commission approved abatements and cancellations during the October fourth twenty twenty two meeting, prior to tax bills being mailed. The additional abatements and cancellations recover everything from nine twenty nine twenty two to thirty one twenty two. A handful of additional real and property, personal property abatements for disabled veterans, disabled low income individuals. And low income seniors were accepted, real and personal property amounts total twenty two thousand nine hundred and eighty one point two five. Of that, six thousand nine hundred and sixteen forty three will be reversed by the state. Cancellations total five thousand eight hundred and eighty two oh nine, and the cancellations are detailed in the atta- attachments that you have. And include two hundred and forty one twenty five and recommended penalty cancellation. And five thirty, five dollars and thirty nine cents in personal property write offs, and this one is the one that's really good, tell you the dollar three. In prior cancellations and prior year additional applicants who qualified for a combined reduction of three thousand three hundred and eighteen forty six. These are based on Grand County Resolution thirty three twenty five that provides tax relief for those with incomes over the state limit, but under the hundred and twenty percent of that.
All right, uh, any questions for Mary Lou?
I move to approve the additional twenty twenty two property tax abatements and cancellations as presented by Mary Lou.
Thanks, Mary.
I would just, as part of the discussion, I'd highlight that most of these are less than twenty dollars that we're talking about, so.
I'll second that.
All right, uh. My fault. I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Hedin, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, and the motion passes unanimously, thanks, Mary Lou. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, but you don't have to. All right, uh, we're up to um item number three, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Uh, RACE, it's the acronym, Grant Narrative for Work on San Flats Road, Andrea Brand, and I believe, uh, Bill, do you want to come up and speak to this as well? Thank you.
Done this in the chain list, so do I share my screen to put my PowerPoint up there?
Yes.
And I'm a little confused since there's two parts to this, there's a, so what um?
Oh, you mean the two different action items?
Yes.
Um, I, this, the, item number four, I believe, is to ratify uh the chair's signature on the. On, on, right. On the support letter, right.
So, item number four.
The next item.
The next item.
Is is a ratification. Right.
But maybe we can just combine the present, I mean, the the two are definitely related, so maybe you can say everything interesting you have to say.
The two are related, but they could go, the votes could go separately.
Right, I'm just saying for staff presentation.
Absolutely, right, yeah. Does that make sense, Andrea?
I think so.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think that, I think the main one is is number three, and I can, I can help speak to number four too, if you like.
Okay, so um, just give a, uh, kind of a presentation here, I'll just give a background, I guess, on on this. Um, so as far back as two thousand fifteen, um. The idea to pave the San Flats Road at least two miles in past the entrance station uh was in the San Flats Business Plan that we write up for the. For the Bureau of Land Management every few years, and uh this was proposed to improve traffic safety for all user groups. And to reduce road dust in the campgrounds. Um, since this time, uh, in the Grand County Road Department and the Bureau of Land Management have looked into grants. Uh, for these, this project and uh over time, as we've gotten into the last few years, there's been additional safety concerns. Uh, in the increase in bicycle traffic on the San Flats Road, potentially with the new Raptor route. And the RACE grant did not work out in two thousand twenty two, but the um commission and Grand County put in for it, but it was not awarded. Um, so we're playing, of course, to apply again, and it has uh in two thousand twenty two. Uh, same as this year, it asked for seven miles of paved road with uh bike lanes from the entrance station to Porcupine Rim. So the RACE grant and the flat grants are good choices for this funding. Uh, another background is just that we have, uh, last year, about a hundred and fifty thousand vehicles entered San Flats through the entrance station. About thirty five thousand drove or rode the Fins and Things Trail and forty thousand rode Slip Rock and forty five thousand drove a Road Hells Revenge. Over the last twelve years, we've seen an increase of ninety nine percent in visitation. However, it's actually more because we do not keep track with our remits, the forty to fifty thousand additional visitors that participate in events. And through commercial activities, commercial tours at San Flats. In just the last third, uh last five years, we've seen an increase of thirteen percent despite the pandemic. So, uh, the idea to pave the San Flats Road was also part of the Grand County and City of Moab United Transportation Master Plan. Adopted in August of last year, so uh paving San Flats Road was number ten on this plan. It was evaluated as part of that lengthy process, and this is just a little excerpt from the plan or from the resolution, I'm sorry. Uh, whereas the purpose of the Grand County and City of Moab United Transportation Master Plan is to identify, plan for and prioritize near, mid and long term transportation projects. Which includes street connections, roadway improvements, new pathways that will enhance connectivity, multimodal transportation and safety. Uh, also in the plan, it says that uh as far as the San Flats Road, construct pedestrian and bicycle facilities to connect San Flats Road to downtown Moab. Construct a shared use path from San Flats entrance to access Porcupine Rim and pave the road from the entrance to Porcupine Rim. Um, also in the plan, they have a little information there on, well, quite a bit of information, actually. On uh crashes involving pedestrians and bicycles are more likely to result in severe injuries or fatalities compared to all crashes. Improving safety for all modes of transportation is the desired outcome of this plan, and the goal is zero fatalities. This is a map of San Flats to kind of just show you how busy it is, all the different things that go off of the San Flats Road, the campsites. The trailheads. Um, and then I just kind of took a Google Earth um of each section or some of the sections, so this first section. From the um yellow pinpoint pin to this next pin is uh from the entrance station to where the pavement ends. And so this uh plan calls for milling up the first one point one miles, putting in new pavement and repaving with bike lanes on both sides.
I will add though.
Yeah, add whatever you want to do.
Buying that, you know, it's not just pavement, it's, it's also storm drainage, you know, all the, all the infrastructure that goes along.
Would redoing that section take any blasting of the rock on the sides?
Not, not in that section, no.
And that, and that's just, the section is currently paved from the booth to where the pavement ends, right above the crock trail, right?
And Bill, please, yeah, join in. Okay, so the next section is just really, you know, this is dirt right now, so it's just kind of showing that it goes past C, D and E campgrounds. And Fins and Things Trailhead and also the Fins and Things Parking Area before the trailhead. Uh, the next section goes past F, G and H campgrounds, the thing, Fins and Things Trail comes back onto the San Flats Road. And then travels through the crack. And then miles three point three to five point eight, we have the Pinion Hiking Trail, Fins and Things North Trail Entrance, Falk and Flow Parking Lot. And the X Roads. And then the last section, five point eight mile to seven miles from the entrance, we have uh the dirt section, it passes the Juniper Hiking Trail. The Juniper Campground, the Falk and Flow Upper Trailhead and the Porcupine Rim Trailhead Parkway. So, uh, just some highlights from the letter, um I just mentioned that, you know, from our remits, we see about. An end with the BLM uh events, um permitted events and tours, we see about, we think we have about two hundred and fifty thousand visitors annually. They come to ride OHVs, mountain bike hike camp, also, this road also provides access to locals, visitors and homeowners traveling to Los Alamos Mountains. Uh, as you know, San Flats is managed in partnership with the Bureau of Land Management. The Bureau of Land Management, Moab's Field Office fully supports this application and will complete all the need for requirements. Uh, also, the Grand County Road Department and San Flats, we could contribute, we've set aside in the next few years, up to five hundred thousand. We were thinking uh toward this, we've learned a little more that that matching's not really required.
Yeah, this is a hundred percent grant.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's hard to turn down that comment, yeah, but uh the five hundred thousand was just uh. The contingency will be built in the cost estimate, but if there is any cost overruns, just because you know how things are these days. We'll have to have it come in our back pocket for any cost overruns. And then the question has just been brought up too, uh just a half hour ago. If, if there's no cost overruns, where would that five hundred thousand go back? I can't speak to her, Andrew, in her money, but I think there would be a way to be able to obligate, but there, there'd be road money. To just, you know, make it so that, this is your project, just keep it right there, that project. Think that would look really good on the application.
And as for San Flats, we're an enterprise fund, so the money could just go to the next year. Um, so uh the proposed project area includes a seven miles of new road, uh this section of roadways twenty, would be twenty four feet wide. And uh it would, we're proposing a twelve foot wide lanes, one to three foot wide paved shoulders and five foot bike path at some both sides. Uh, the purpose of the project is to reduce the likelihood and sperry of accidents along the San Flats Road, reduce conflict between motorized and non-motorized users. Reduce traffic congestion and decrease dust in the nearby campgrounds. Um, the award of this grant would benefit the public by dramatically increasing safety, decreasing conflict, paving the roadway. Roadway will also eliminate washboarding and fugitive dust, drivers will experience better traction and visibility. Availability of bike lane will likely reduce traffic congestion along the route, less congestion will also reduce time and stress spent traveling the route. And facilitate access for emergency vehicles, but police and other project will definitely, will directly benefit thousands of visitors to the recreation area annually. And uh, let's just. That's right, thank you. Um, gonna read this whole paragraph, but just in general, for those who might not be aware, we have a lot of different vehicles up there on the San Flats Road. We have cars, we have four by fours, we have trucks pulling trailers loaded with OHVs, we have pop up campers, vans, large RVs. Um, people also enter by driving, course, street legal OHVs, motorcycles, bicycles, many in travel group, in groups of three or more. Commercial use includes tours, groups of off highway vehicles, event and four by four participants with groups of up to twenty five vehicles. And the shuttle companies taking the bicyclists all along this road to various trailheads. A lot of the OHV riders drive rentals are unfamiliar with the operation of these vehicles and the terrain conditions. Additionally, there are nine campgrounds along the San Flats Road with a twelve hundred and forty six campsites. Campers travel the road between the campgrounds and the trailheads on OHVs, motorcycles and bicycles. And then, um, already talked about the dust, but uh fugitive dust reduces visibility, increases risk of collision. Between users on the roadway, high levels of traffic also increase the rate at which washboarding develops on the dirt portions of the road. Washboard roads create safety hazard for reduced visibility and reduced control. And then I just took different pictures along the road today, so I don't know if uh Bill wants to talk about any of these. I talked to him about where to take some pictures, but uh there's numerous curves and numerous line of sight issues on the San Flats Road. This is uh just in past on the radio tower, so about two miles in, it starts to, we start to have some one lane and some curves. And then uh this is around campground F, and then as we're approaching Days Crack and passing campgrounds G and H. And going up to Days, you call it Kirk's Crack, it was on our maps, Days Crack, I'll just say the crack. Which is right, you have to talk to the museum or something, um, and so this is the other side of the crack going down. Uh, and then up the other side, and then these are some turns, there's an S turn section before the Falk and Flow Parking Lot. Um, and then as we're coming, we're turning around, coming back down, and these are just some views from the side of the crack. You know, we have this one lane as you go into the crack, of course, I many times have seen people start to go down right here and someone's coming up. So they have to back up, um, that's, you know, just motorized vehicles, those kind of things, let alone bicycles in there and other folks. Um, and then where the pavement turns to dirt, you have a time to the washboard, you have a drop off on the right. Um, Bill was saying this would be a place, um. Maybe would have railing, guardrails, and then as you're getting closer to campground H, coming back toward the booth, just kind of showing. The curves in the line of sight, and then this is one that's pretty severe, is coming up from campground H before you get to campground F. And uh, so quite a radius that you're going before you can see, and then it narrows back down again as you're coming back toward the radio tower from the other side. So, uh, anyway, any questions?
Yeah, Trish.
I was just interested to hear your guys' discussion.
Yeah, the trail mix. I, so to clarify, I wasn't at that meeting, but I did, I did sit down with, uh, with, for Colin. You were there, right, Andrew? Yeah. Um, so what Colin said, it was a pretty, it was a very kind of robust discussion about that. I believe the discussion was, uh, precipitated by a request for a letter of support for the bike path, uh, portion of the, of the, uh, grant, right?
Well, it was a letter for support for, you know, the road. So, I had got a lot of support from the Bureau of Land Management, and then I thought, well, this is something that will help the mountain bikers in accessing the trail. And so I thought, when I go to trail mix, I talked to Maddie, and she said, there's some questions, could you please come and present? I didn't have this presentation prepared last week or whenever that was. Um, but, um, so I was just, uh, hoping that they would support the idea of the bike paths being, you know, on the, with the paving.
Yeah.
Paved lanes on either side of the road, or, you know, support the project.
And, and I guess, I guess the, from what I, from talking to Colin, the result that I heard is that, uh, most people were more reticent about supporting the pavement.
I think a lot of them were taken by surprise. They didn't really, weren't really aware of this, this project, and that had been supported by the commission and, you know, three times.
And that surprises me because if you look in the, in our unified master plan, we have stakeholder meetings, we have things from advisory committee, which our alternative transportation team is on. Uh, Trail Mix was a stakeholder, so the idea that they didn't know about this project is surprises me.
Yeah.
It's all right there.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you, Bill. I also, I, I've talked to, that's, that's kind of, that, that's my community. The, the bikers, the bike shops and whatnot, and I've heard, I've have personally heard from a lot of people about this in the last week, who are, um, who, who, who honestly don't like the idea of paving Sand Flats Road. Um, and I think one of the biggest things that's come up when I've talked to people about it is they feel like there hasn't been enough public discussion about it. Um, so maybe the public discussion has happened in forums that, that they haven't been, uh, privy to, but, um, but that, that is the biggest thing, is that we've, we've never heard of this proposal before, and it's something that we'd like to, to discuss a lot more.
I disagree with that.
Yeah.
This proposal's been commissioned. This is the third time. Twenty-one, twenty-two. And it's been approved every time we send it out. Twenty-one, we missed it because we were, missed the deadline by fifteen minutes. Twenty-two, we went, we had a deep breathe, uh, last week.
Yep.
And we were this close to getting that money, twenty-two. So, that's, wouldn't say four years, but we've got a better understanding of how, how we should present our application. I think we're doing it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Who, I, the question is, who turns out on that kind of?
Yeah, well, the question is also, uh, what? What's the pushback? If you, if you did hear the pushback?
Uh, I mean, I think that, I, well, one, I think people were, I think Andrew is right, I think a lot of people were taken by surprise by it. And then, uh, the biggest thing that I've heard is it would change just the character of that upper Sand Flats area. I, I've heard from quite a few people who are not wanting to pave any of it more. Um, but I've also heard from quite a few people who think that paving it at least up to Days Crack through the campgrounds would be a good idea. So I think there's, I think there's differing opinion on a lot of that. Um, and, and again, the, the main thing I've heard, like I said, and, and Bill disagrees with is that, uh, is that it hasn't, um, been a conversation that, uh, has been out there as much as people would like.
Um, I, I, I think this issue about, you know, the, the process is, is important, but be, before addressing that, I just wanted, Bill, you, you mentioned the first section didn't have any blasting. I'm assuming that places like the, the crack or no, there is blasting.
That, that would take some, some blasting, absolutely.
And other, other places beyond the crack?
Not that I can really visualize. A lot of that stuff, rock and structure, it'd just be ripping it or hammering it if you need to.
Okay, and, and then how, how much realignment, um, I mean, I'm, I don't know how to measure the degree of realignment, but it, it sounds like one of the goals was fixing, you know, some of the curves so there was better site distance.
Exactly. I, I, I think, you know, some of the curves are, are definitely have some site dis- issues. It really just is a matter of folding back the sand, you know?
Okay.
Not necessarily realigning the road, but maybe moving the road into the interior because some of those corners are really close to a drop-off, or it could be another guardrail section, you know? Design hasn't been, hasn't been made at all. But those are some of the things that will have to be taken care of, the site distance, not only vertical site distance, but horizontal, like coming up, coming up towards Moab, at the crack, you cannot see if anybody's coming up there, you know? So that's a vertical site distance issue, and those kind of things. Uh, or rather horizontal, uh, site distance issue. Uh, yeah. From what I gather, and, and on talking with Andrew, she's expecting a, a lot more, uh, use up there, not only in, you know, mountain bikes and whatnot, but by using it, it gets a lot, a lot of use. And I would say here, and, and this is a real quick look, I'll throw this in. Um, going back to about two thousand ages, about as far back as our data goes, the road department. Um, now, I won't give all the details, but so far in maintenance is, is nearly a million, three hundred thousand dollars, Sand Flats, really.
That's, that's over, over eight years and so?
Yeah, two thousand and eight. So, so essentially, that, that includes down at the, at the intersection. So some of that's chipping money, but majority of it is hauling material in there, uh, covering up, you know, putting more aggregate on there, things of that nature. So that's, we'll have to continue, if, you know, get some pavement down.
That, that was a question I was gonna ask you, so really, uh, if it does get paved, we're gonna see somewhat of a savings. The five hundred thousand that you talk about putting to maintenance is probably gonna be minimal compared to what you're doing now?
Well, it, it, it'd be probably, I, without putting a pin to it, I mean, you know, if we were to split the, the five hundred thousand, two fifty to mandatory, and two fifty from, if we don't use it in the project.
Right.
Just obligate two fifty, that'd go a long way. I mean, that's, that's a, one, we could chip that whole road in one season to that, pretty easy.
And, and don't we normally, or we, sorry, you normally mag chloride that, that's going to also get rid of that expense that we deal with attempting to?
Yeah, and, and we have teamed up with BLM and applications, and they, they supplied the mag, and we applied it, you know, prepped the road, which always means we haul the important material.
Right.
You know, where we mag it, those kind of things.
And to your point of the design not being finalized, if we put in and, and it was awarded, uh, what would that process look like? If, would there still be opportunity for, uh, community feedback about design and?
I think for, for design, um, I don't know what it would look like if we put in, you know, for the seven miles and got the award for seven miles and then saying, oh, yeah, we want to back off, we don't even want to be four and a half miles. You know, that's not good for them. So I think if we're gonna put in, we better decide what we're gonna put in for. But, and distance wise, and we better decide quickly because the application's due on the twenty-eighth at this point.
So I, I share, um,
Go ahead.
Um, I, I share some of Jacques's concerns about the process, and I, I do want to make it clear that I, I think that, you know, the people who screwed up are basically me and Jacques and other commissioners, you know, I think it's our responsibility to this, to recognize when, you know, some project has a lot of potential community interest, and make sure that we have the open houses and workshops and things like that that are sufficient. So it's certainly, you know, not, you know, zero criticism of staff for how this has been conducted so far, but in hindsight, I think, you know, in one of these previous years, and we're going to this, we probably should have, you know, done, done a better job, because it seems like quite, quite a lot of people are, are getting surprised by this now. Um, I mean, I, I think there's good, you know, when one night, when there's gonna be work on one ninety-one, you do, that has a lot of open houses, when the city's, you know, overhauling, you know, trying to do diagonal parking on streets, they do processes like that. Um, I, I guess there were some open houses in, in the context of the Transportation Master Plan, but it's buried with lots of other things.
Yeah, there's, there's, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
There's ten projects there, and, and I will add, uh, pretty good projects. Although it's number ten on the priorities list, it's still on the list if the money's available, if we can get it.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and, and I also, I've, I've certainly, while on the planning commission and on the county commission, you know, get, I've been accused of, you know, not consulting people, even though we bent over backwards and did, you know, so, you know, you're never gonna reach everybody, but I, I just think in hindsight, I, I think with these projects, and, and I think King Springs around is very similar, and, and maybe we should think about doing some workshops for that project as well in the near future. Um, I, I think we should, should do more of a job, a, a better job of letting the public know that this is happening and also soliciting input from the, the many different user, user groups. Um, so I, I, I think the question that Evan asked about, you know, if we were to go ahead and turn the grant application now as opposed to next year, how, well, how much are we locked into? You, you seem to be saying we're locked into the, whatever length we put in for. You said it'd be bad form to change your mind on that. I don't know, are we locked into like the configuration of bike paths? The, I.
Well, no, I don't think we're locked into any kind of design, but but the length of, of it, I mean, that's, that's what kind of, that's money you're asking for, so that's gonna cost to go that far.
Okay.
And so, you know, right now, right now, I think, you know, the, the design could be separated bypass or even, even, uh, you know, just off the edge shoulder type bypass, and the price would be that much difference, you know?
Yeah.
So it's not really gonna change that dollar, that, that much of a thing, but definitely the distance is gonna change, you know?
Yeah. And, and some, something else I, I forgot to mention before, I guess someone else's chance. I, I do, I mean, I've talked with Andrea a, a, a bunch about this and, um.
My pass, and the price would be that much difference, you know?
Turn, turn off your mic.
It's not really gonna change that dollar, that, that much of a thing. Definitely the distance is gonna change.
Can you mute the people who are online? Something else I, I forgot to make.
Oh, you too.
Okay, sorry.
This, and, um.
Yeah, it's, you're not. I got to listen, my, sorry. That was weird. Um, okay, so starting again, um, I, I mean, I, I think the, all this statements you made about the need for paving and this, this particular design choice and all that stuff, it makes sense to me, and I wouldn't be surprised if it, after looking at this really carefully, you know, my favorite option might be exactly what's being proposed now. Nevertheless, I, I, I do feel like there hasn't been enough public engagement, and there's a lot of people who care deeply about this road, so I feel uncomfortable locking ourselves into just decisions, and if, and, and I'm just wondering if it means waiting an additional year to apply for the grant, and maybe that's the price we pay. And again, I, I think it was our screw up for not starting some kind of process two or three years ago when this first came up. But, you know, better late than never, never for the, oh, look, Mary's had her hand up for a while.
Um, I, I understand that there, you know, some people are concerned, but I also understand because we've been dealing with it a lot. I mean, how we spent, I felt like a whole year dealing with the event issue. And everybody says, well, we don't know about it. We spent years talking about so many things, that then people come up and say they don't know about it, even though we've had public meetings, we've had it posted, we've had it on the agenda, and we've done that, and now we have staff who has put in a great deal of time, a great deal of effort. And I feel bad that people don't know about it and were caught off guard. But I also think it's, it'd be foolish for us to not move forward and try to get this money. I do think there's a problem with, uh, our communication. I mean, Bill's mentioned it, we have a problem, that's why I've been pushing for over a year to have a public relations person that could be putting this issues out, could have been putting that on our website, that this, this proposal has been discussed about, that we are working on a new, uh, uh, grant program, where, you know, like the grant program was very open and public, and everybody acts like it wasn't. So, uh, I, you know, I hear their frustration, because I've felt it before with the city. When they've said something, I thought, oh, I didn't know about that. Well, whose fault was that? It was mine. And I, I think we've been talking about this for years. It seems like Andrea and I were talking about stuff like this when I first got on the commission eight years ago. I, I feel for the people that were caught off guard, but I don't, I think we need to work on it, but I don't think, uh, punishing this project because of our inability to let the people know about it in advance is, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Uh, Mike, yeah.
And if I could add, you know, going through this, uh, ETMP process, and it was, you know, it was very, I don't want to say arguise, but it was science, I mean, there was a lot of feedback. And a lot of time put into it. And, you know, it's a, basically it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars off, and that, we're not gonna use it.
So, what, do we get feedback specific to this project as part of that process?
That's how that project got on number ten.
But, but is, do we know like what comments people made, what options were considered, is that in there somewhere?
It's got all the, the, the stakeholder comments, uh, that I'm aware of anyway, on all the projects, and, you know, prior, how, uh, prioritized the methodology, and.
Right, but I was wondering, but, but that document covers a lot of different projects, I was wondering how much of the comment was about the Sand Flats Road?
Well, you just had to talk. Pick out your own time, something, said something about yes or no about.
So for that to become number ten on the list, were projects, um, ranked then, and how, how did, how did that, it was public comment and, um, dictated that that would be the tenth most popular project on the list?
Well, yeah, it's from the stakeholder meetings, you know, so there's business, business owners, uh, outfitters, and everybody that you could think of generally, you give their stakeholder, then there was the tag team, which, which, uh, was, uh, you had, uh, active transportation, I think there was right there.
Right, right.
A lot, a lot of the, and the government.
Yeah, Chris Barrett is online, and he has a stand-up, I was gonna, uh, I was gonna go to Chris if you had something to add, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, Jacques. So I just want to say that, um, I agree with Andrea and Bill, you know, we've had a ton of public process. As I understand it, a Sua employee brought up some concerns at the Trail Mix meeting. I guarantee that Sua knew every little detail about this from the get-go years ago. And so I don't really buy any of this, oh, we didn't know about it stuff. I, I would just want to encourage you to trust Andrea, trust Bill, there's nobody in the county that understands this road and what it needs better than they do, so that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris.
Mike, okay, barring, barring, uh, the arguments against process, the benefits, uh, that I'm hearing right now, and I heard as a citizen, I mean, last year, uh, the benefits heavy outweigh, heavy outweigh the aesthetics of the road, there's already a road that we're just gonna pave it. I mean, the safety aspects alone of a bike lane, of trying for a bike lane, uh, for, away from vehicles, so vehicles don't have to, uh, delineate around their original path, uh, and know that their paths open, is that safety aspect alone. I mean, I can't speak highly of it, uh, more than you guys, but this is a no-brainer.
I would just say these kind of grants, uh, opportunities, yeah, they roll around every year, I suppose, but they're tailored for these kind of projects. It's not something that, that Grand County can just pull out of their back pocket and have eight million dollars, you know, sitting there to build a road. Uh, it's hard to come by.
Bill, it looks like you had something to say.
Yeah, Jacques, I'm curious, uh, the, of the pushback, is it the bikers would prefer that the bike path on? Yeah, Jacques, I'm curious uh the of the pushback is that the bikers would prefer that the bike path on. Would be on the side in the dirt or they against the pavement? Was there an option there that the bike path? Doesn't get paved if that's what they're looking for.
There, I mean, there's been talk, I think, in Trail Mix and otherwise of of potentially a parallel dirt, single track path on the. It would be the south side of the road. Um, that could be an option for bikers who like. A lot of people just park at the bottom of the Falcon Flow Trailhead and they climb up and that would make for a more interesting climb and get you off the road. So that's been that's been. Uh, put out and then as far as safety goes too, I believe Kestrel Run, there's a section of trail that is going to be uh that's already approved and it's in the. Process, right, Andrea? It's going to go from the bottom of the Falcon Flow Trailhead off the road and then down and it'll uh bypass Days Crack and end up. Uh, below that, so that would also go a long way towards getting getting bikes off the road, but just but you asked me about the the pushback and. I think from what I've heard from not just not just bikers, but a lot of recreationists, I've heard from friends who climb, even if a friend who's a who's a dirt biker. Um, there and and that is is what the concern is, is that it would just it would change the character of the road. Some are also worried about. Uh, pavement could lead, as far as safety goes, could lead to higher speeds on the road. Um, and uh it by both, um, you know, all by all users, including cyclists, you can go a lot faster on it on. On pavement than you can on on the dirt. So I guess there's not, um, you know, there's not a hundred percent buy in that it would make it safer for those. Recreationists and I I'm I'm very much on the fence on this. I don't I don't really care one way or the, I mean, I do care a lot. But um I'm I haven't completely made up my mind. I I personally think that paving it up to Days Crack is a is a is a good idea. Absolutely be in favor of that, I think, uh mainly just because it'll, you know, alleviate a lot of the dust and and you see a lot. I ride. I literally ride my bike up that road once a week, maybe more. I I ride it all the time and I. I don't feel like it's a safety issue for me when I'm on my bike. I don't feel very exposed on that road, but but that lower part, I think it it does make sense. I do see. A lot of people do donuts on the road and it definitely degrades the road down there through the campgrounds and such, and I think it would be good. Kevin. Um, I just wanted to ju- adjust what Mary said. I I think I do disagree that we've had um. Sufficient public involvement with this. I think a lot of people were. A lot of people on Trail Mix are surprised by this. Some of the details, you know, weren't kind of news to me. Maybe maybe that's not my fault for, you know, I wasn't attending the. Transportation mass plan meetings or playing as paying as much attention as I should have. But if I, you know, you compare this to how we do other planning efforts and specifically how we do other road planning efforts like. One ninety one and city street parking issues, I think there's been considerably less. And it's not a question of doing the project or not, it's a question of. Slowing the project down by perhaps at most at most a year or for the next grant cycle. I think in that year we can, I mean, my understanding. Is that even if we were to apply for the grant now, there would be elements of the design that still have to be decided on. Those discussions discussions can happen in the interim year. So I don't, I mean, I'm, I definitely think, you know, there should be some pavement paving happen out there. I'm con- I'm convinced of that. I don't personally have a super strong feeling about the different length options, but I do feel very strongly. That um I I think a lot of people in the community feel blindsided by that and that's. That's the real test about whether we did an adequate job or not. And I and I think we've done less outreach than in some of the other examples you cited, Mary, where. Yeah, there's always going to be someone who doesn't hears about care about it, but this is more than just an isolated few people. It seems to be a pretty large fraction of. People who use that road a lot, so. Andrew.
I just wanted to interject that um. Two hundred and fifty thousand visitors that come to Sandflats are not. We're not at the Trail Mix meeting.
Sure.
Or not at this meeting, so we have a lot of people that are not represented.
Yeah.
This is a safety issue for. For recreationists and sand flats and I even have staff in the last few years that have. Told me how concerned they are driving the road. Sometimes they feel like they're taking their life into their hands some mornings or afternoons driving the road because of. Speed of the traffic and the washboard and losing control and. So um my staff's worked with me a long time and they they've seen the changes with the increase in visitation. They don't feel as safe. Driving the road on a patrol as they did just a few years ago, so. It's not just me, it's my staff as well that has concerns about safety.
Kevin. Um, I mean, I I I agree there are serious safety things, but I I don't think that settles the argument. I mean, if. If safety were, you know, such a trump card, then why haven't we been waiting for years to start this until we get a grant? Could spend county money at least do some of the, you know. Okay, so we have.
There weren't many, the flat grant was the best match and Kane Creek. Got it over us, but then Kane Creek didn't happen, I guess, because it was a bigger project than.
Well, no, I think the county, I think what you're saying, Kevin, is what is county road department in particular, any safety upgrades on that road? We have.
I I guess more what I meant was maybe the county commission should have realized, you know, could have appropriated money and we could have. Done it that way, but I I I I guess the main point I wanted to make is. You were discussing the timing of the improvements, not whether they're going to happen at all or not, and so. This fact that there's a need for safety improvements to me doesn't dictate applying for the grant this year rather than next year, so that.
Is it a flat system? Uh, in is it a is it a flat timeline? Uh, say, would you apply a grant uh apply for the grant this year? Uh, does work start? I mean, months after we get the grant or we're looking for that? So if we didn't apply for it this year, we didn't get it this year. It would just, it would be pushed out. By years timeline, we'd run, we'd run two hundred and fifty thousand more people down that same road that already exists.
Yeah, the project, you know, if you get the funding, the project didn't start the next day, you're construction, you know. You got you got the funniest sort of design.
I understand.
And things like that too, as well as construction. So it's it's probably two years out once you know if you got the money. If not.
Yeah, I I I very much understand that timeline. We will only be in and not favorably asking for this. We would. We would be asking for another years or another years on top of the two years design or planning process. We'd just be throwing out another year.
Kicking it down and can down the road basis.
I think the the thing that that we're trying to address here is that. The the transportation plan really focuses on connectivity and and, you know, traditional uses of of roads and byways and. And what we're dealing with with sandflats is that it's a recreation area and that there's a lot of pushback about preserving the experience that. A lot of other roads might not um. Have that same sense of like uh priority or ownership, you know, and and. To Jacques's point, I don't think it's just the gravel riders or folks, you know, who are pedaling. I think motorcyclists and other. Motorized users are are also looking at that area for an experience and I think that um. Uh, with all that being said, that's kind of like why there's so much back and forth. I also think that, you know, paving through the campsites definitely up to the crack definitely makes a lot of sense for keeping dust down. I do know that this has been uh on the agenda before and so um. I'm hesitant to to backpedal on the application process, but if it if it does uh. Go through and and the the. Application is submitted, you know, I think that it might be worth looking at at where um other places. You know, if it didn't go all the way up to the tanks, where's another logical place? Because, you know, right at the crack, then it just kind of like dead ends all of a sudden. So.
Well, originally, I mean, way back, we had said Pinion Trail, so you go down that hill and the other side. But then Bill was saying that Falcon Flow made more sense.
And and I believe it's a it's a it's a mile. I I went out and wrote it uh two days ago. It's a mile from the top of Days Crack to the bottom of Falcon Flow. To the Falcon Flow Lower Trailhead is exactly a mile.
So so I, so yeah, you know, if the if the idea is to downsize the project. Uh, that's would be my recommendation to take it at least about.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all agree that that visitation use all throughout the county is increasing. You know, a lot of these numbers that the quarter million folks, I think they're just going within the first couple miles to slick rock and fins and things and. You know, even Hell's Revenge right inside the gate, so I don't know how many of those two hundred and fifty thousand are going all the way up to Porcupine. Um, but we do know that there's going to be more people next year and more people the year after that, so.
Yeah, it's hard to tell how many local people go past there to look for. Quite a few, I'm pretty sure. Myself, but that.
I was like, there you go, two.
I don't, you know, what that count is.
It's, I mean. Obviously, you guys are much more familiar, but it's it's if the pavement ends there at Porcupine at the tanks, like how many. Tourists or people and, you know, not familiar are going to drive to the end of the pavement, say, let's go a little further. And then be in that canyon above Real Creek and then being like, oh, jeez, we don't want to be here. How do we turn around and?
And the road does get pretty rough by the time you hit the Forest Service boundary, it gets to full high clearance.
But that's not my specialty, so.
Yeah, that's what they make science for.
If only science works.
Well, at least for me. But no, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, the the transportation master plan is definitely a strong document. Um, I think that it did have a due process. I think that the. The fact that, you know, it might have been off people's radars as a recreation plan. Is kind of what we're running into. Um, but. In supporting uh both of your departments, I would be okay with submitting this for an application now and then. You know, revisiting it between now and when the shovel hits the ground.
Well, what I could do, I guess, is uh talk to uh Tim uh with. One to the village, we've been working pretty tightly with on this application, Andrea and I. We and we mentioned a little bit about what if we take the scale back, but. We could do that, but we got to, we got to know where. We don't want to, like you say, apply for seven miles and get it and say, well, now we don't, we don't. We're not going to build that far out, you know, so we, whatever we want to apply for, we did.
Well, I mean, if if we're already budgeting for overs, if we're saying, hey, yours.
Yeah, that's just a little chunk in the big.
Yeah.
So so the to Pinion is, I believe, three point four and then to uh the bottom of Falcon Flow's four point four is what I got from the gate. The entrance booth, so we're looking at at half to maybe roughly two thirds. But I would suspect that a lot, a lot of that, that getting through Dave's crack would probably be a major part of the expense.
Yeah, and you know, and I'm too dog about this and I shout this out to Tim the other day, your S R, you know, because part of this grant. Is innovation, you know, and so. Not sure, but it's just an idea about having. Having. And this may be even worse about having signals, you know, automated signals down there, but they have to be. Solar, so they may not be all that. Reliable.
Yeah.
Might be actually a liability if they're not working, right?
Right.
There is an action.
Yes, Mary.
Yes, I, as you as you've. Heard, I I really support this project. I do think we can improve on how we communicate, but I don't think this is the time to. Draw the line in the sand. And with that, I move to approve the narrative letter uh to accom- accompany the raise grant application.
Thanks, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion by Commissioner McGann and the second by Commissioner McCurdy. Uh, discussion, um. Yeah, this this one, this one's hard, really hard for me. I I definitely support um Andrea and Bill and and the work that you've done and. Um, I I agree with Kevin that this is partially, you know, that if this this has come up before and and we haven't flagged it for for further discussion and. I'm as responsible for that as anybody. Um, I. I have heard, just like I said before, from a lot of recreationists, and I think this is an area that recreationists really cherish. Um, that they would like to talk more about this, uh, so. I'm tending to not support it. Personally. But but it's a tough one. So Bill, could you could you say more about what aspects of the road design? Road design would are still to be determined and and could be. You know, part of some, you know, se- seeking public input on and and how much we're actually, you know, you you already said we're committing to the length when applying for the grant. I mean, are we committing to two lanes versus one lane through the crack or is that something that's decided later or?
Um. I don't know that something of that magnitude because, you know, that's a pretty big piece of the project right there. That would have to be written in stone necessarily. I mean, it could be maybe left like it is, but you're. For the most part, I think that that site distance issue needs to be taken care of, you know, and that's going to be a. A challenge in itself, you know, but without taking some of that. Uh, making making it wider in that air pattern. But uh, yeah, there's some design issues there, like site distance, it is just logical that it needs to be. Taken care of when you got that that kind of amount of traffic, those those bigger truck interiors. And and they do go up through the crack up on the, you know, to the home during campers and stuff. So. I will say uh that probably from. From Falcon Flow. To the to the Porcupine Trailhead there, it it's caused less problems. Safety issues. But there's still some. I don't know what you're asking.
Um, not, I mean, that's great information, wasn't wasn't exactly what I was asked, you know, I did a bad job asking the question. I I guess I'm. My my concern about this is is the the process issue and I do I do think we should. Yeah, give people a chance to have additional meaningful input and which we can't do if we've already decided this is exactly what we're doing because when, you know, send the grant and we're going to. Stick with that. So I was just trying to better understand what aspects of the project are going to be decided in the next year or two. After we submit the grant proposal versus things that are decided, you know, when we submit the grant.
Right, well, I would say that can kind of change some just because the cost of everything goes up or whatever, but say we. You all agree to go to Falcon Flow uh and and Tim will. Likely have that cost per mile already or is really close. Um, it is he's aware that it may have been downs scaled down.
Okay.
Ask him if he could do that, yeah, it's just the cost per car. Uh, so. I can't answer that question for sure. I don't know once we submit a project. Um, then when we start to actually get into design of it, things will probably change. Point, yeah, but the basics of of site distance, things like that, if you want to widen that. Area out uh in the crack and it's remains the same, you know, I think, I think those. Site this issues are going to be there.
Okay.
So.
So so in particular, the so the motion on the floor would be for paving all the way to. Porcupine Rim Junction and for. You know, ma- making the road just as wide through the crack as it is elsewhere. That's that's what's on. That's what we're voting voting for right now if.
Yeah, I think, you know, down the road if. You know, we see that, okay, well, that getting through that crack, it's going to cost a lot of money and it's going to take us even shorter. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Then, yeah, we could probably. Figure out some kind of design exception, but you got to remember it's federal money, so they're going to have to decide what that is sign, you know. If we can do that design exception.
Bill, yeah, your hand up.
That's been my experience working on the Loop Road and and with the federal money, you know, they. Bill was able to do the design exceptions uh. With all the facts, I guess.
Would that come from Jones and DeMille? I mean, if we struck. The distance from our letter, would that make the application any less strong?
Uh, I I think it's just uh basically saying what the what the commission wants.
I'm going to get the Florida bills had his hand up for a little bit.
I'm certainly big on involving other groups for sure, and I understand where you're coming from, Jacques, and it feels to me like. Allowing that bike path to be out on the side would certainly mitigate a lot of the pushback that this is receiving. I believe we could look to better air quality with this being paved. With all the dust that goes on up there on a full time basis, myself included, I'm up there a lot, not as much as you.
Yeah.
But a lot. And the other thing is, I honestly think that it'll slow traffic down because a lot of the U T Vs that do like to do the burnouts and. And the other thing is, I honestly think that it'll slow traffic down because a lot of the U T Vs that do like to do the burnouts and. Brodies aren't going to have that option and, well, they are.
Yes.
Seven miles part of the rest of the road, so I honestly think that it's going to clean that area up a lot. Air quality and speed wise, so.
Anyone else have comment before we go to vote?
Well, a a question has come up a few times is is the length, um so should we send someone propose an amendment on that and?
Are you proposing an amendment, Kevin?
I mean, I I don't feel as strong about the length as some other people. I mean, I can, I'll do it if no one else does.
I've never known the money to go far enough to do the complete project when you go for a grant. It's so rarely. Sufficient. I would be really surprised if we got the money if it would take us that far. I think having the buffers.
Cost of construction materials, everything.
So it so do we start at the bottom with the with the money and move our way up or do we start at the top and come down?
I I think uh with our next agenda item, with our letter of engagement with Johnson to melt, if we could specify some of the. Concerns or.
The net, this is actually the letter, the the next one, we're ratifying a letter that's already been sent, which is basically um. Which basically is just uh procuring the funds to have Jones and DeMille write the grant, am I right, Bill?
Correct.
Okay.
And that and and you're just for clarification, it's just for writing to the grant.
It's just for the writing of the grant, right? Yeah, okay.
And to clarify, that's a ratification. Yeah, oh, yeah, they're on.
They need to be paid no matter what.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's part of the grant, too, is is uh uh I can't remember the exact word to use, but it's basically uh working, working together. That's. That's what we're doing. Splitting costs, we're trying to make this project happen and it's a good project.
We vote unfavorably uh for this. We'd be tossing out the money uh for Johnson to melt.
Uh, it. You said no, Bill.
It's still getting there.
They have to be paid.
So, oh, oh, sure, of course.
You know, it was thirty six hundred dollars to.
Yeah.
Read this uh application.
Yeah.
And Andrea and I are are splitting costs.
To Kevin's point, uh. Uh, I'm okay moving forward with how it's drafted now rather than adjusting uh lengths at this point. Knowing that the actual design is still yet to come and there's. Potential there for tweaks once we know if we even get it this year. And if we go back next year, then. Maybe we pick this this discussion up.
Earlier, earlier, right. That's that's the key is getting it out to the committees earlier, yeah, in front of people earlier for sure.
Well, I'd like to call for a vote.
Yeah, okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, uh, at the motion on the table, uh, Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner McCurdy. Um, for approval, uh, all those in favor of approval, raise your hands. And all those opposed. Motion passes five to two with Commissioners Hadler and Walker opposed. Thank you. Uh, you might as well stay up for the next one, too, although I think this one's going to go a lot faster. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're we're about a half an hour late on our citizens to be heard, and I think there's. Probably a few people on Zoom who would like to be heard, but so I'll open that up right now. I'll first ask anyone in the chambers. Is anyone here uh who would like? Like to be heard? That that hasn't been heard yet. Sorry, Pete. Is there uh anyone on Zoom? Uh, please raise your hand. And I can't see everybody on there. Anyone who would like to be heard on Zoom? Okay, uh, Howard, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay, get the clock. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all the efforts. The commissioners do to make our community better. Um, as you well know, um, or you may not know, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. And was recently appointed to the role of heading up a hospitality committee. It was the lodging um committee, but I felt that um the hospitality is a much broader um role, so. We're all tax pots. In other words, all of our private sector efforts are generating taxes that the county can benefit from. Um, the average annual occupancy for Grand County is sixty two percent. I can testify as a business owner that the last three months haven't been great. And if I was to inquire as to the marketing strategies adopted to help boost our numbers, attract visitors to Grand County. I would guess there hasn't been much of one. That's not only um affecting each individual merchants and. Um, chamber members incomes, it's also affecting the tax revenues collected, not only locally, but also at the state and federal level. There's a marketing fund. Um, if marketing was applied, there would be greater occupancy in the months when it's low and that would benefit all of us. In other words, supporting tourism by marketing and attracting visitors is mutually beneficial both to the private and public sectors. And I strongly urge on behalf of all the members that you reapply the the gas pedal and start attracting visitors to Moab again. Again, thank you for your time and commitment to our great community.
Thank you, Howard. Uh, anyone else on Zoom uh care to come forward and be heard? Okay, it looks like not, so we will uh continue with agenda item four, ratify chair signature on assignment order to Jones and DeMille for completion and submission. Of the raise grant funding for work on Sand Flats Road and uh. Uh, like we explained earlier, this is a ratification, the letter's been signed by myself um to uh. To pay Jones and DeMille for doing the grant application if if I if I'm right. Yes, Evan.
I would move to ratify the chair's signature on the assignment order to Jones and DeMille for completion and submission of application for rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and. Quality equity grant funds to improve Sand Flats Road.
Thanks, Evan. All right, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner McGann. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of ratifying the uh, all all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously, seven to nothing. Thank you, Andrea and Bill very much, yeah. All right, we're on to agenda item five, uh draft job description and grade change for sergeant. Uh, which would be B L M and search and rescue commander, and we have Renee and I believe Mike, uh, you're sitting in for Jameson today, right?
Yes, I am.
All right, Mike Palmer. Ooh, that doesn't sound.
All right, um, thank you, everybody, and thanks for Mike for joining in person. Sorry, I can't be there. Um, I have two items on the agenda tonight and I wanted to kind of describe my numbers first because it pertains to both items. Um, and then we can get into the draft job description. Um, so to come up with the the fiscal impact, um. I just pulled the budget as we budgeted um at the end of the year for twenty twenty three. I put in um the staff changes that we've had since the beginning of the year, um such as changing over the chief deputy and and other staff changes like that. Um, and then uh in discussions with the sheriff and the sheriff's office and Chris and and all of us in common admin. Um, we we took a look at at how these potential two items would affect the budget. And we see a significant savings of about eleven thousand. There's a bit of a mistype in my fiscal impact um section on my agenda summary. But the first item uh is for our for eliminating the B L or I'm sorry, eliminating the SAR commander. Combining that role into a with a patrol deputy who's handling our backcountry B L M calls and um. Offering some additional coverage there and and get pulling the the search and rescue into into the organization a little bit more. With a full-time position um at a sergeant level. So it'd be a two grade increase um from the current patrol deputy handling the beyond calls. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add to the the um B L M and SAR position change?
Um, no, you've pretty much covered all of that one.
I will know, uh, we have a B L M contract. I think we are in uh in Mallory or ComEdman added that to the agenda summary. Um, we get about approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year for that contract um to cover personnel and equipment costs.
All right, thanks, Renee. Any uh any questions for Mike or Renee? So this would um.
Chris raised his hand. Um, he might have something to add to that.
Okay, yeah, Chris, please.
Thanks, Renee. So are is this motion also including um not hiring the evidence tech?
Um, that's actually my my second item, Chris, that uh that has the task force commander and eliminated that position, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the the this would um basically eliminate the special uh SAR director's role and roll that into the sheriff department. Along, yeah, okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, most counties have a deputy run their search and rescue, so we're looking at restructuring.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone have any other comment or care to make a motion?
What is that? Out of out of curiosity is. Is this um or, you know, the SAR people on board with this? Is this people?
We've spoke to Jim and Aaron Bold.
Okay, so it's so this, you don't think this is controversial or anything like that? Okay, thanks.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Trish.
Move to approve the draft job description of Sergeant B L M SAR Commander and grade change to grade fifteen and eliminate. The search and rescue commander position effective February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you. Second, Mike. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any other uh discussion or questions for um Mr. Palmer or for uh Renee? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Uh, we will continue with item number six, draft job description and grade change for major crimes task force commander and back to you, Renee.
Sure, so so this item um also tied in with these these same numbers here. Um, so I should have made this a little more clear. The numbers that you're seeing is a combination of both of these changes, not individually. Eleven thousand dollars in savings, so that's a combined total. But um we don't currently have a a major crimes task force established. Um, the sheriff's office would like that established. So this would take a deputy three position while serving as task force commander would be paid at our supervisory sergeant rate as a grade fifteen. Um, by having such of a such task force, we'd be open for a lot of reimbursement, such as some funding from the Department of Homeland Security. Some grant funding that's out there. Um, and and to make sure that we have the budget viability in this position. We propose to eliminate the evidence, the part-time evidence tech um that was approved at the beginning of this year. Um, Mike, I'll let you touch on a little bit more of how how some of that funding sources could come in. Um, and what it could cover as far as the task major term, major crimes task force.
Um, in order to get some of this federal funding, we have to have a task force with a commander. A lot of it's through H S I on the Stone Garden ground is uh a way to call back human trafficking, child trafficking and the flutter. You know, in county and everybody around us, rather than.
Yeah.
Um, got a lot of checking. It's a no go unless we have.
Right.
And then it it also takes um every every member, like each deputy will be able to get on the task force. And they will get overtime shifts that are paid for by the government instead of coming out of our. That just gives them opportunity to have, you know, some extra money coming in if it's not really if our budget's higher.
Great, thank you.
I was uh, could you speak to eliminating the evidence tech?
Uh, right now we got two investigators that do it. Uh, I I can do it, too. I was one at one time. We need this more than we need that, basically what it is. There's a quite a few of us that are willing to jump in and take a little bit of extra duty.
But that that position hasn't been filled since we created it.
I don't even know if we ever had an application. Renee, do you know the answer to that?
No, uh, we haven't even posted it yet. We held off on that until since the beginning of the year, so.
Uh, yes, Stephen.
So I I would um speak to this issue as well. I I think Grand County has a lot more serious crimes than we think of. Um, last year, there was at least one human trafficking case.
Um, there was one that involved child.
There was one that involved about seventeen people. Seven seventeen people in a vehicle.
Every day we stop vehicles with traffic.
So so I do think there's there's a need for the major crimes division here. I think Moab's a small town, but we we find ourselves at a crossroad between. A couple different um routes and there are routes that go from Phoenix up. There's a route that goes from Las Vegas to Chicago and we intersect them on I seventy. And and so I think it's, this is something that's important. I know the sheriff had had talked to me a bit about it. Um, the funding that they were speaking, that you were speaking about, I think, is overtime pay if they're specifically looking for illegal substances such as fentanyl. Or other narcotics that are being trafficked, they can get overtime pay reimbursement, and I believe that's through Homeland Security. And and also there's some other federal programs that can help facilitate and give additional funds to the the county sheriff's department as well. So I I think this is, it's important to have a response to serious crimes like.
I I definitely uh support the task force commander position, especially if it's uh eligible for federal funding. But Renee, do you think we should go ahead and uh eliminate the tech position? Or is that something that we should keep in the back burner and just if we haven't posted it yet, see if the demands for it? Because we just created that this year, right?
We we did just create it this year. Uh, the sheriff is willing to to give up that position. Um, it was created or it was originally proposed as a as an. It was a the spillman analyst and the evidence tech, so um and then it was. In in talking in some budget cuts in the sheriff's kind of budget through the budget season. Um, it was proposed to just take it down to that part-time position. So I think if the coverage is there, I don't know that it's necessary this year. Um, to keep it open.
Um, I'll make a motion. I I move to approve the draft job description of major crimes task force commander. And grade change to grade fifteen and eliminate the evidence tech position effective retroactively to February thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, I have a motion on the table, uh, Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion or questions?
Um, addressing what Evan just, I'm I'm guessing that was eliminated just to keep this budget neutral, so we don't have to amend the budget. You know, you don't have to amend the bottom line of the budget. It supposedly should be added back again in the future.
Okay, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Thank you.
Uh, we are on to agenda item seven, Moab Red Rock Roundup, uh, twenty twenty three, special event intent to apply. And Commissioner Winfield is presenting this, the uh original application, I believe, didn't uh meet. Uh, it wasn't done on time and uh there were some uh questions about the. Potential process, so Commissioner Winfield brought this to the agenda, so all of you present, Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, my request or my original reason for bringing this was because there was a discrepancy on our website. According to the applicants and confirmed also in an email between the applicants and McKenzie. So to me, it was a legal issue and that's why I raised a concern over it. I don't own a U T V. I don't have a horse in the race. I believe that everybody that comes forward here should have a fair opportunity to go through the process and that's all I was. Want to do is ask that they be given that fair process and if it was a mistake on our part. Or if there was a issue with our website somewhere, why? It could potentially lead to litigation and again, I don't think any of us want to be involved in any more litigation and. Hence the reason for me raising my hand and saying, let's let these folks try and explain what went wrong. And here we are, and I believe we're going to allow them to speak.
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely. I did say uh that you guys could come up and have some words, so come up and uh introduce yourself.
Mark Beck. Troy Harris. Yeah, great. Um, Troy Harris, the article called Offload Events.
Listen, and do you want to slide the microphone over to Mark? Thanks.
Uh, Troy and I are co owners of a company called Offload Events LLC, better known as doing business as Moab Red Rock Roundup here in Moab. Uh, the issue that Commissioner Winfield speaks about today is for your new ordinance six six seven. Um, I'd like to read a couple of lines from that. Give me a moment. Basically, that ordinance states that for a first quarter event to be held in a certain year, the deadline for an ITA submittal would be the first Monday of January the prior year. Or pardon me, the first Monday of July, the prior year. For a second quarter event, the deadline, the ITA deadline would be first Monday of October of the prior year. So for a quarter one twenty twenty three event, the IT deadline would have been July fourth, twenty twenty two. For a second quarter twenty twenty three event, the IT deadline would have been on October third of twenty twenty two. Ordinance six sixty seven was not adopted until October eighteenth of twenty twenty two. These deadlines would have been impossible to meet. When we began researching the process or permit application here in Moab, we began that around the first day, first second day of December. Looking at the Grand County Commission website, the only active ordinance at that time was ordinance five ninety seven. That was an active link. It did not state it had been superseded. It did not reference the six sixty seven process. So that is the ordinance that we follow. You have high impact events that are occurring in quarter one and quarter two of twenty twenty three now, most notably the Easter Jeep Safari. Easter Jeep Safari did not submit a process per ordinance six sixty seven. They submitted it per five ninety seven. And the only ordinance is actually in effect on the first Monday of October, which was the deadline for this second quarter event we're proposing, would have been ordinance five ninety seven. Ordinance five ninety seven states a hundred and twenty days no deadline before the beginning of the event, which is why we've asked for some consideration on our ITA. Uh, there's a couple of other items that have been mentioned in here, one of them being the business license. Uh, we did travel down to Moab to address that. We saw that requirement in ordinance five ninety seven. We spoke to your people here about a business license, and they stated the new process, which was the first time we heard of the new process, was that a temporary special event business license would be issued with the event permit. We were going to inquire what we needed to be able to do business license here in Moab, and we were told that would come with the permit, and all we needed was a mailing address. So we chose Mr. Green's mailing address that he exists here in Moab. On the road issue, basically within your guidelines, it states that we are able to identify anywhere we're going to be going to hold this event on any public roads. We are not holding this event on public roads. There are no escorted guided rides to the trailheads in front, no police escorts. So, yes, just like any other event, there will be people moving to and away from the event. There will be traffic just like any other high impact event that you have here in Grand County. But we did not try to deceive the board, the commission, or anyone else by stating no on the road question. Because the guidelines specifically state that we need to identify roads where we're going to be having the event or holding the event or traveling because of the event. And we are not doing that at this time. Uh, we did take a really good look at the this commission's letter to the previous event rally on the rocks. We took into account the many items in there that were listed as reasons why they felt like that was not a good fit for the community. Uh, noise was mentioned more than a dozen times. Congestion was mentioned many times. And so we took a good look at that. And when we were putting this event together, we made an effort to mitigate those items, which is why we found a partner in Red Cliff's Lodge, and they're here tonight to speak about the benefits to their lodge and the benefits to the community to take the event outside of Moab city limits and put it out somewhere where it is well away from the major areas of Moab. I'd also like to mention that even though it was a grand county response to rally on the rocks, the city of Moab was mentioned almost twice as often as accounted. So we took that as being sensitive to the town of Moab. Uh, we do expect most of the people that come to this event will be housed at the lodge. There is infrastructure out there to support those personnel. There are restaurants. We expect that most of them to stay up. There will be some that stay within the town. So we began looking at that as a mitigating effort for the congestion, for the noise. We are not going to require that we have police escorts to the trailheads in front. They will meet our guides at the trailheads, and we'll move from there. We have several other items we're going to talk about as far as how we would stay within the guidelines of the BLM for our guides and how we would address possible infractions by members of the event. And I believe Troy will begin with the infraction.
So one of the things we looked at is we have heard and we understand the noise situation. Machines can be noisy. To the point, it drives us nuts sometimes. But if we could possibly get as many people as possible to trailer their machines to the trailheads, meet up with the guys, and then from there they would unload and then also load them back up to the trailer and back through town to their hotels or their Airbnbs or out of the lodge. That's one aspect that we are going to put into our paperwork and anything, whoever signs up for it, that's what they're going to have to agree to. Now, there are some stipulations where if they come out with a flatbed and they're hooked to motorhome, they're camping, they don't want to have to pack up their whole thing. But it's the way we look at it is it's no different than a few of those still driving through town. And we are also going to pass a no strike or one strike rule. If you get pulled over for loud stereo, um, whips on your underglows or on your being a nuisance, your speech, whatever, you're done. We'll pull your we'll pull your uh take it off your arm and you're booted out of our our event because we we don't want to cause problems with them all. We Jimmy, I I'm not even from here. I love this place. I come here as much as I can because I just love it. So we don't want to lose anything. We want to prove to you guys that, hey, yes, there's some bad apples in there. But ours, we're going to do the best we can to prove to you guys that, hey, we are respectful. We understand your guys' needs, and we want to obey it. Um, the other thing, we are going to have security full time out there at the lodge. Um, to help any issues that may arise.
Um, so I'll just no drinking and driving. Yeah, our security is basically going to be onsite to make sure they do sell liquor at Red Cliff's Lodge. We're going to have someone stationed at the gate. No one's going to leave that lodge that is intoxicated, or as we can tell, we will not deal with any of that. That is something you're going to have a hard volume. And all of this will be stated on our website, and they will have to agree to this prior to registering for me.
Yes, if they don't click the I agree button, it will not allow them to go any further inside.
Right. We're also going to have them all. Everyone registered for the event, any driver is going to have to have the new OHB license. And Kent has volunteered to be the manager of our guides. Ken, you want to talk about the BLM guidelines?
Yeah, I get the task of organizing the guides and just to give you a little background, some of you already know, but some of you may not know, but I was in the UTV business, of course, and also my background.
Uh, people are indicating they can't.
I'll fill my background in law enforcement for Grand County and ran search and rescue for twenty plus years. So I fully understand safety. Um, I also am well aware of the environment. Um, I'm a real stickler about environment in our county. And our guides will be trained and on on trail etiquette. They will be first aid and standard certified. They will be trained on local history of Moab. And this is not going to be a pre for all with UTBs. This is going to be an organized guided ride, which is awesome because of having some, we'll have at least two guides per ride. So we make sure that every, two, excuse me, three, we're going to have one in front, one in the middle, and one in the back. Uh, make sure that we don't leave anybody behind or anything like that. Um, there is no off trail use. It would be released very heavily. And there would be no human waste because we are required to carry backpacks. And we give each guide those backpacks distributed around. And but it's it's all about protecting our area and making sure that it's pristine, it's rebounded. And there will be cleanups. There will be training on on the trails. And and obviously, we're going to be picking up garbage and things like that. But as an outfitter, most of you know, I'm very big on that kind of stuff. I was part of the throttle down in town committee with Mary. Also, I was one of the people that helped implement the reduced speed limit in Moab. I did get a lot of flack for that, trust me. So, um, so we're we're here to to put less impact on Moab as possible. It's going to be held outside of Moab City and fourteen to sixteen miles away. Everybody's going to be mostly treading to the trailheads. Um, I know that there's going to be some treaders brought in, and those who can't trailer trailheads, we're going to provide that service for there. So they'll be able to go north of town or south of town without a lot of congestion on highway. So that's where the, so we're totally safety conscious.
One other thing, also, we are going to have a four car team. So if there's any accidents on the trail, they we will have satellite phone. Phone, contact us at Red Cliff's. We will be sending out two cars each time to clean up any accidents. And so when someone else that isn't on a UTV or someone who's just hiking up in there will not see, you know, spilled oil or something like that on the side of the trail or anything like that, they'll carry rakes, they'll carry, you know, recovery gear, and we will have the machine that has wrecked completely moved out of there like it in never.
All right. Yeah, thank you all. Yeah, we that's that's a great summary of your event. I'd open, I think my my sense of this agenda item is is that it speaks words towards the process. So if we so approval today, I think, means that you you move forward to the next step in the in the approval process. Right, exactly. Yeah. So it's not a it's not entirely a green light one way or the other. It just means to go forward. Okay.
We'll bring this to you in detail.
Right, right, exactly. Um, so also speaking to the approval process. Um, yeah, anyway, I I'd open it up to commissioners for questions or discussion. Mike? Go ahead, Mike.
McKenzie, do we make that mistake?
The website?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was the committee's page that had outdated information on it, and that's what we found.
Would you say that over again?
Or sorry, this is sorry.
For that, Michael, for that, Michael.
Yeah, there was a committee's page that was had some outdated information on it they found during the research. And so thank you.
Did any other applicants for any other events make the same mistake?
No, we haven't had a lot of new applications coming in. A lot of what we're going through was the information we collected during our whole process change last year. And so there there are probably one of three new applications that we received during.
Now, ask that because it was it was before my time. But I I understand Bill's point of legality and I mean, thanks for saying we made a mistake. Uh, Mallory.
Um, just to speak to the process thing, sorry, I don't remember your name, but you, Troy, you said something about having people click that acknowledge. And my understanding is that there's have to set up an account to submit the intent to apply. And I think on that page, I know it says the ordinance and it's linked in there. So I think that is something to note of that was that ordinance was on the committee page, but however, setting up the account and submitting the intent to apply the correct one, six six seven was on there, and there was that knowledge match.
You are correct. However, we did not get notified that there was an electronic submission page until we first made the call to McKenzie in the middle of January. So when we began looking at this page, the only guideline that we could find on your website at the beginning of December was ordinance five ninety seven. I understand that ordinance, the new ordinance six six and seven was put on toward the end of December. However, we didn't go back and recheck. And then when we spoke with McKenzie the second week of January, she did inform us that there was an electronic form that we needed to fill out. And we did fill out and submit that. And the next day she said, well, you missed the deadline and explained that to us. And that's what we showed her the description in your website. And that ordinance five ninety seven, the length of that ordinance was actually active until February thirteenth. It was only changed to your new ordinance one week ago or slightly longer.
I I understand. I'm just saying that.
No, thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. And just catching up even more here. Sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, well, finish what you were going to say.
This is for the intent to apply, not the event.
Yeah.
Not the event applied. This is you're going to apply. Yeah, we we will provide much more information as required by your new process. McKenzie has informed us, we do have time to get through that within the time deadline to the June twenty one through twenty four.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, first, just briefly to adjust what Mike was just asking, I I think the reason in in the new ordinance that we had us broke the application in two pieces, you know, the full application, the intent to apply is we kind of felt bad turning people down after they had put in a lot of work on an application. So I think the the idea behind it didn't imply if you get a green light, then then unless something goes really wrong, you're approved all the way through. That that's my understanding of the ordinance. Um, so, you know, we we shouldn't think that this is not a, you know, I I think a green light today is basically a green light unless something really unexpected happens with the application. Um, I I just wanted to give a little bit, I mean, I I think especially for the new commissioners who weren't here here last fall, you know, we spent a lot of time last year debating the the new special event ordinance. And one of the main things we wanted to accomplish with it is we wanted to decide about special events um, one quarter at a time, you know, looking at a bunch of different ones because our our calendar is pretty full. We don't have room for everybody. We've got to turn some people down. And so instead of just deciding one at a time, you go, you go, you know, that is really hard to coordinate things. So I don't know how many times, oh, you know, in twenty twenty two, staff would come up here and they say, well, you know, we've got this. You know, we we spent a lot of time scolding staff, like, we never again want to have to have this one event in front of us. We want to have a big group. And we made exceptions. We made exceptions. And then finally, we get the new ordinance passed. And and I think the only possible exception we've had now is the um, volunteer officers where they wanted, they were already approved, but they wanted to change their date. And up and so that so I I guess that's a privilege to say, I I feel very strongly about the process here. And I think no matter what kind of event this was, if it was, you know, even a relatively low impact event, I I think we should decide these things in groups and not one at a time. And, you know, I it's I feel bad that you missed the deadline. Those things happen. Um, you know, there was a case a few years ago where someone misinterpreted land use map and thought they had bought a bunch of highway commercial property. And we're very shocked to find that they didn't. And they spent spent a lot of time saying how they they made an honest mistake. And, you know, but you know, we don't, that's that's not enough to change the rules. And I it's I think, you know, when you guys got started in early December, if I understand, we had already decided on our full slate of events for the second quarter. And some of those people got turned down, not because there was anything wrong with the application, just because the calendar was already crowded. And so I think it's unfair to everybody, including those people to at the end to go outside this quarterly review process and give the go ahead things one at a time. So I I know it might be frustrating because you have, you know, tried to um, address impacts and, you know, some of the things you said were very thoughtful. But personally, at this point, I'm just thinking, you know, I'm just thinking missed deadline. Um, you know, I understand you found a part of the web webpage that did it wrong, but I just don't think that's sufficient. You know, we no one else made that mistake. Um, I mean, we're sorry that we happened, that it happened. But, you know, I think it's a simple phone call to ask anyone how we're doing events, you know, would have done it. So it feels a little bit unfair, but I think it would also be unfair to to make a special exception here after spending so much of last year trying to get the process where we're deciding things one quarter at a time.
Uh, Trish. Respect to that, we we did not miss the deadline. It was a policy that would have been impossible to meet.
We when we were discussing, there was a transition period when we were switching from the old set of deadlines to the new set of deadlines. And we recognized, like, especially for the first first quarter of last year, that, um, you know, it was impossible to meet that. And and so it was understood and might even be ordinance, I'm not sure. You know, there there were some different deadlines that were used during the transition for the first and second quarter. So you're correct that that deadline didn't happen. No one met that deadline, but we did have meetings to get the the first and second quarter events in place as we transition from the, you know, the old special to the new one.
I'm going to, Trish, add her hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I I just think hopefully you guys understand we're trying to be more holistic about our special events and making sure that we we really concentrate. we, we really concentrated one on, you know, community events, cultural events. I remember the last time we had the round, there was a bunch of running events. And so we really debated that because we really want to find some balance within our events. And, and in order to do that and to do it holistically, we need to have all the events come in at one time. And so hopefully you understand that. And to me also, the, the basic concept of if it doesn't go this year, you apply next year, right? And so it's not that your event is dead in the water. You apply next year and you, we pool you with all the other applicants and we can have a holistic view of that. Um, and that was really the goal. And we worked really hard on revamping that special events process. So hopefully, um, if it doesn't go, which I can't say that right now, you can, you have that perspective where we're coming from. That we, we put a lot of time and effort into that.
Mike?
Boring what type of event it is.
County employee, we made the mistake, right? It was not the previous.
Yeah.
Previous was not taken down.
Huge process change too. And they're new organizers, but also too to speak, I mean, on both sides of the fence too, I'm neutral. Facilitator of information, so.
I understand that completely. It's just, I mean, how many, this, this is a one-off because we made a mistake.
I, I disagree that we made a mistake or made a significant enough mistake too.
I, did we, I, I'm just asking the county.
No, I, I, I can't take comment from the, uh, the crowd, from the, uh, from the audience.
Did we make a mistake?
We had outdated information.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to bother. Second question, Stephen, did we make a mistake?
So, so my initial comment on this was what, what should have happened in a perfect scenario, they should have tried to apply and they, they shouldn't have been permitted to submit an application. Um, unfortunately, they were permitted to get an application in the system and then that generated where we started to do what we would normally do in the ITA process where individuals would comment on it from the different organizations. Um, that's, that's where my comment came from, which was why are we seeing this application? I, I, from, from a legal standpoint, I think there was notice. I think there was information out there. Uh, we had public open meetings. I, I think those existed when we did the original changeover. Um, I, based on my conversations with admin, they tried to make an effort, a concerted effort to try to capture all of the individuals that were going to apply. The information was there on the website. That shouldn't have been there on the website. But ultimately, I, I, I look at the circumstances where we have an applicant that starts going through the process and they, they kind of get their foot through the door and where we allow them to go through and start completing the ITA process. And that would be something in the future that we really need to be more, um, critical on that, yes.
I completely agree with that.
Yeah, you go ahead, Mike. Yeah.
Sorry, uh, looking at this, if, if you, not to point on you guys, if you guys made the mistake, deny the application. Uh, I mean, it's pretty easy. We made the mistake is, is my point of view, but thank you.
I think, I think there's a question as to the mistake too. I think.
Yeah, I don't see this as coming out of left field. I mean, even to our previous discussion this evening about a master transportation plan and people not being aware of a bigger process that was happening. Um, I think this was a, a pretty widely discussed, well-publicized, multi-year process. And, um, and I think that it, it, there was, it wasn't so much that one thing was outdated. It was that there was dual pages out there. So although one page might have been incorrect, there was definitely a process that was, um, adopted.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that's true. And I think the, the analogy with our previous discussion on the transportation plan is a good one. I mean, this, what, there, there were newspaper articles about this. It was discussed in multiple different meetings. Um, but I do want to point out that I, if I'm, you know, correct me if, if I'm wrong, Mallory, but my memory of the, this discussion in the second quarter is we did not approve any new, I don't know if we improved any new events. We certainly didn't improve any new motorized events because we this, we thought the calendar is already, already full of foot races, bike events and motorized. That was dominating the spring. And so if we were approving new events, we wanted to be something that added variety. So, I mean, I, I just don't think, you know, if they had, if their application had been competing against all the others, I don't think it would have been improved back then because we didn't improve any new things. We just gave the green light to continuing events. So but again, I, I, I think the, I, I think it's just a process issue. So I'll, I'll allow you to speak a few.
Yeah, just to address, uh, Mr. Clapper's point, there was not dual information on your website when we located the ordinance five ninety-seven. The six sixty-seven portion of your website was not stood up until just before Christmas. So there was not dual.
What is it?
It was November tenth.
We have screenshots. We have screenshots of your website and the six sixty process did not exist at the time that we found the only ordinance we could find on your website, which was five ninety-seven. And that was actually on the Grand County Ordinance Special Events Committee webpage.
You speak to that at all?
Yeah.
I, I know we're splitting hairs here, but that's what we're talking about.
I think we are. And I hate to open the can of worms, but I'd say there are a number of ordinances and such on our website that are out of date, but I still go back to the acknowledgement. And I'm thankfully not a politician, but I think what you guys described with your event, um, really hits a lot of the goals with like the impact mitigation and such. And just looking at the process where I come from, uh, if it were submitted later, I think it's great. You guys have a very mindful process to clear the lesson. But that's not my.
You have something to say, Mary?
I have, yeah, I have a question. So this is for the second quarter, right?
Uh, second quarter, yes.
Early June.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying.
Or sorry.
In, into June, right. Second quarter runs the April major.
When do we do the third quarter?
We, we've already done.
So it's just the fourth quarter that we're, which is, uh, which is what, what dates I can't.
October, November, December.
I mean, an easy way around this is if you could change the dates to, uh, being in October, November, December.
We, we did look into that and if the chair was mine, we'd like to have Red Cliffs dress up.
Brian?
Yeah, I am. I'll turn it over to Karen. She's the one actually that.
Make sure you come up because people, people on Zoom and people on YouTube on.
My name is Charlie Bolton and I am the Director of Sales and Marketing at Red Cliffs Lodge. Um, and as you all know, October is one of the very busiest months in Grand County. We don't have the availability for the number of rooms to host them at Red Cliffs. So that isn't an option. And, 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 and we could, we could host them in November, but I believe Mark, that's not, you guys have a conflict with that.
We, we do, we, if we can't host the majority of the people at the lodge, we feel that that is too much of an impact to Moab. So we would not want to get a October date because that would drive all the lodging into Moab and it would drive all of that traffic through Moab and down the road. So October doesn't work. November, there is a very, very large nationwide known event happening in San Hollow or Side by Side that we simply can't compete with. And so November would not be a day where we want to invest the funds and, and work down that road. So.
As long as December comes, it's, it's the point where we wouldn't get many people coming because we're spending money on Christmas.
Yeah.
But I would like to, um, bring up the whole issue with the special events application process because I did it last year. In fact, I was the first one to do that application, the new application that was in effect last year. It was the one and one. And I can understand you're wanting to do them in a quarter because it's a really long process to get it back. So on May fourth, we at Red Cliffs wanted to host a concert. And on the website, the application directed me to Elaine. And I thought, I thought Elaine worked in San Juan County. She does. She did starting in the fall of twenty twenty-one, but that was on the Grand County website. When I submitted, when I sent it, then a, an inquiry to Elaine, I got an auto reply that my contact was August. August said, no, not me. It's Rachel. So I got a hold of Rachel and sent her screenshots of the application that I found that directed me to Elaine. On May sixteenth, I was the first one in the county to, uh, submit as the intent to apply. Um, that intent was approved on May twenty-fifth, but we ended up canceling that concert. Uh, I'm sorry, we canceled that concert. And then I, I did an intent to apply on May twenty-fifth and that was approved on June twenty-first for a July twenty-fourth event at Red Cliffs. And then on October fifth, because we had submitted prior, we received an email from Rachel submitting, asking us to submit all of the, our requests for any event from June to July, or July first, and we had to have them submitted by October tenth. And then on November fifteenth, she sent out the new process. And, um, and then I did speak to Mackenzie on February first. And so my recommendation was going to be that you update the website because it wasn't current. So I'm, I'm looking forward to see what guys have now.
Okay, thanks. Did you, have your hand raised, Bill?
Yes, I, I mean, I think what we're here to do now is to take a vote on whether or not we're going to allow them to continue. And I'm not sure because Kevin's right, we are new here, but is it a green light for their event if we allow them to move forward?
In, I think in essence, it's, it's saying you, you more or less have our blessing to move forward.
Yes, like one aspect of that is it, it doesn't even come back before the commission unless we specifically ask for it. You know, normally the commission would approve the ITA and then the staff would approve the final application because beyond that, it's all administrative. Now we can make exceptions to that. We think there's some reason we wanted to see this particular application coming before us, but that's, it's just an indication of the idea that the, that the main decision is at the ITA stage and the the rest is closer to a risk.
Don't the automatic triggers, uh, of high, high impact event, low impact event automatically point? If their intent to apply went through, doesn't the, or that's what we're voting on today. But the automatic triggers that come off the special events, uh, service ticket, don't they automatically pitch it back to us?
No, that, no, the, the triggers happen before the IT, the triggers is what, is what sends it to us to discuss the ITA. If those triggers weren't weren't triggered, then it could go all the way through without ever become, coming before the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, Stephen.
I mean, I don't want by any means to feel like staff's getting thrown under the bus here. I mean, I feel bad, Mackenzie, I wouldn't. You know, definitely my apologies if it feels like that's coming from me because it isn't meant to. And, and with any of our staff, I mean, we have a great staff and never get lost to lose any of them in my mind at this point. So I, I, I mean, I, I don't know the way around this other than to vote to either allow them to move forward or not at this point, correct? I mean, this was a brought up for me because, by me because if I felt like it was a legal issue. This isn't me saying I want a side by side event.
No, I, I very much understand.
That, that isn't what I'm about. It's, um, it's about what's doing the right thing here. And so, uh, in my mind, that's the right thing.
Yeah.
Is to honor that.
You're, you're, you're welcome to make a motion, Bill.
Um, I make a motion that we vote on this to allow them to move forward. Yeah, do I need to use some proper verbiage? You probably got it.
Yeah, there is a, uh, suggested motion in there that, uh, is probably, uh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to suspend policy and approve the intent to apply outside of the quarterly review schedule as specified in ordinance number six, six, seven for Red Rock Roundup. With or without conditions to be discussed, um, I, I don't understand that.
So that would be like Kevin was saying, if, if, uh, so this wouldn't, this is basically like a, a green light to start moving forward. We as a commission could put conditions on the motion saying we approve this, but, or we, we green light it, but it has to come back to the commission potentially for us.
That's the condition that I would add, that this comes back so that it isn't outside of the scope. And it, it is not just a carte blanche move forward here.
Okay.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Then with conditions.
Uh, Mary?
We're into discussion.
Yeah.
This is really difficult because, um, we did, we're ruling. I mean, it was a very long, arduous process to get our special event ordinance up and running. Because we really wanted to be able to look at it as a whole and not piecemeal. And so I really want to honor that. But I also recognize that there was some issues with the website. And, uh,
And continued.
And continued. And this is the first year. And so there's part of me that says, well, you know, when you're, when you're starting new, you have to tweak and you have to make a man, you know, you have to move things around and be a little more flexible than when things have been in place for a year or so. And so, uh, so you can see where I'm, I'm wanting to do the, what we work so hard on. I also see the problem. And then I'm really torn because sadly, um, this is an event that, that people in the community are really, I mean, we got sixty-five comments that went through the office opposing this event, opposing us giving the green light. But that, and that doesn't even count the ones that just came directly to commission and didn't go through. So there's probably quite a bit more. And so it feels like then if we say go ahead, we're going against what our constituents, the people that elected us wanted to do. And then I also am uncomfortable saying go ahead because of your situation. Because what if we say, okay, you got the green light, go ahead, but we're not guaranteeing you get to do it. Like, we're not guaranteeing it. And so you go through all this effort, all this expense, all this time to then come back and not have the approved of your event. So I am, I don't know how I'm going to vote because I'm really, I could, if I was on a debate team, I could argue both sides very effectively. And so, uh, with that said, I, I turn the floor over to someone else.
Uh, go ahead, Mike.
You had, had to say.
Go ahead, Mike. I called any.
I completely agree with public outcry on the point of if again, sorry, if you guys made the mistake, uh, that's on you. You know, we denied. Uh, or I would deny, uh, but it was first year. I understand this probably not going to ever happen again, seeing that we have that ordinance in place. We got to work that this, this one, we got to work with because it was, it's, it's a mistake. It's, it's not the event style. It's not the public outcry saying we don't want this event. I'd like, I'd like as much public, uh, conversation on that point, uh, as possible, but we can get that along with their, or their, their application. Uh, we can get that same time.
Goes at the time and the expense to get it there. And, uh, I asked you about previous event or maybe plans, but we would like the opportunity in detail, address those and address that to the community.
I agree on that point.
Um, actually, once, once the motion's on the floor, usually we.
We keep the discussion to the commissioner. Right, sorry, it's on the floor. That's all right.
Um, yeah, so I, I guess I want to argue that this is, um, e- e- even though I, I, I understand, you know, I, I've listened carefully to what you said. I understand the points you're making, but I'm not convinced that we, I mean, I, I know I feel badly for you, but, um, I think this is an easy decision for us for a couple of reasons. Um, let's consider some hypotheticals. What, what would have happened if our webpage was completely up to date? Well, you would have come there in early December and you would have discovered, you know, oops, we missed the deadline for June, you know, that, and so it would not have been approved if our website is up to date. Um, and I'm assuming you haven't, you know, since you don't have. Um and I'm assuming you haven't, you know, since you don't have suppose um suppose you'd started earlier, like you would, you would, you know, the word had got out and you real you realized, oh gee, you know, we want to do something in June. So we better get our application by roughly October, when we're doing all the other second quarter events. Well, there's some very similar events, probably lower impact um that were on our docket and separate second quarter that we turned down just because the calendar is kind of full. And we don't want to fill every single weekend. And so that's getting to the point that I keep harping on is it's not really for me possible to decide on special events one at a time. I want to look at the calendar. I want to look at the other possible events we have. Um and so I I think under either of those hypotheticals, it wouldn't get approved. So I I'm I think it's easy to um easy decision to say, no, it doesn't get approved, you know, now. So I I'm planning on voting against this.
Yeah, I think that that brings a lot of it uh is that the the real effort with revising the special event permit process was um so that we didn't have to look at at events individually. Because it sounds like there's been a lot of effort and a lot of thought put into this event, and I can really appreciate that. Um I think to Kevin's point, but there were other events that didn't make the calendar. And um to to bring them up individually, it it's uh it really muddies the waters. And I think, sorry, I lost my train of thought with uh um oh, the the event permit, the new process was also put in place to make it easier for applicants. And I think that um you you know, to kind of kick the can down the road and say, well, keep working on it. Um isn't doing anyone favors. Um we did fill the calendar here, you know, it's the rodeo is in town for a week. There's relays happening. There's another motorized event in the middle of the month. Uh there's a foot race, there's the county fair with thousand plus people that are is is another long extended event. So there's really only half a dozen days, maybe ten days in June that don't already have events scheduled for them. And that was really what the process was going for was to to look at the whole quarter, and that's just June and your month, you know. Uh there's others around that. And so I typically am not a big fan of suspending policy when we've had something in place. And I re- recognize that there's growing pains and that um it's frustrating to be on the other side, but uh I know that staff had thrown out the idea of other dates and um applications in the future. And so uh I and tonight I don't uh support suspending the policy around our new special events permits.
Uh Mary.
The other concern I have is we did turn down events. And is that fair to them to now say, well, we're going to let somebody else come up. I mean, you know, like I said, I could argue this on both sides, but that that concerns me because are we going to all of a sudden have those people come and say, well, we want to apply? And no, we might not get it. Because that's what we were really attempting to stop is that uh that last minute, we put, you know.
I I'd only add that the conditions, it is, we we um, one of the reasons that we changed the special event permits is because things were coming to us and it was a little bit last minute. So even even if this goes through, you know, you guys start planning, advertising, et cetera, comes back to the commission in a few months. It's, believe me, it's like next to impossible to to deny at that point. I mean, that's that's generally why this is is really a a green light. So that's a, that's, I I appreciate conditions, but in 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 theory, they're great, but but in practice, they are difficult. They're difficult.
Do we? Do we have other events that are citing this mistake that were applied or?
No, 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 no one else has.
No, no one else.
Yeah, this is it.
It's one off.
Yeah.
Well, I move we call a vote. Um clearly, if this doesn't pass, they have the option of coming back next year.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll say, I I I definitely, what you guys put together is actually is is pretty impressive. I think it's a, it's a um. Yeah, I think you've you've worked pretty hard to address a lot of the issues that we've had in the past with events of this type. And uh and I commend you for that. Yeah. Um I'm gonna, any other questions? I'm not going to call for a vote, any other discussion. All right, so the motion is on the table, Commissioner uh Winfield and a second by Commissioner McCurdy um to approve, all those in favor, raise your hand. And all those opposed. And abstain. All right, the motion fails uh two to four with Commissioners Walker, Clapper, Hadeen and Hadler in opposition and Commissioner McGann abstaining. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to agenda. Agenda item eight, adopting a resolution approving the acceptance of the Questa Del Sol Phase eight or Phase thirteen required improvements and final release of warranty bond, Alisa. And thank you for your patience, Alisa. And if you don't mind, I've needed to use the restroom for a long time, so I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Okay, take take it away, Elise.
Should go pretty fast. So uh what we have for you for this item is a bond release request. Um this is for the Questa Del Sol Phase thirteen. It was a four four point seventeen acre P U D subdivision located on Arena Roja Road. And this is the final phase of the Questa Del Sol subdivision. The developer has requested release of all funds, including the ten percent warranty for completed and accepted improvements. Um per our land use code, the release warranty funds shall occur following final acceptance of the required improvements in accordance with the approved standards and specifications. The Grand County engineer has inspected and accepted all improvements and recommends the release of all funds less nine hundred sixty five dollars for required chip and seal treatment that must be completed within a one year uh time with the engineers' acceptance of the improvements. So that would be January eleventh, twenty twenty four. So the total funds that are approved to be released is three thousand two hundred forty six. And the Questa Del Sol Plan Unit Development um has met the approval for the final bond release.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I'd move to adopt a proposed resolution approving the bond and warranty release for the Questa Del Sol Planned Unit Development Phase thirteen less nine sixty five for required chip and seal road treatment. Uh to be completed in spring and authorize the chair sign all associated documents. I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Clapper, second by Commissioner Curdy. Oh, I you would look like you wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna wait till you called for discussion, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know, just want to confirm that we're um the nine sixty five can be, with this action, the nine sixty five release can be handled administratively or um or this is approval of that when it's ready.
Oh, the ten percent, the the little
The chip seal.
Five that's being kept, yes, I I believe so. Is that your understanding, administrative?
Yeah, or yeah, like like the commission is tacitly.
Maybe the minister will reflect that that's the understanding.
Yes, I will take her. The minutes will reflect.
Any any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so that's unanimous, six zero with Commissioner Hadler temporarily absent.
Next, okay, go for it.
Okay, so the next item you're looking at here is uh the property owners requesting approval of a amendment to adjust the lot line which straddles the border of Wingate Village Subdivision Plan Unit Development and the Danes subdivision also P U D. The plot amendment will adjust the existing lot line between lot one and Wingate and parcel B and Danes subdivision by conveying point zero two acres to the Wade property in order to rectify an approach in approachment of a structure. Each lot will currently contains one single family dwelling. No roadway improvements are required due to the adjustment of this lot line and no additional site improvements are needed. The plot amendment would not affect the requirements of the low property within the Wingate subdivision to comply with the Wingate P U D standards and H O A and same also with the Danes subdivision. The application was evaluated and processed against county land use code, section nine point eight point one, amendment, section nine point five, final plot or five, article seven, and was bound to be consistent with all the L U C standards. Therefore, staffs recommending approval of the low Wade amendment.
Okay, someone want to make a?
I'll make the motion. I move to move to approve the findings of tack set forth in the staff report dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty two in the proposed resolution approving the final plot of Wingate subdivision, lot one amended and Danes subdivision parcel B amended.
You're saying I'm, I'll turn it over to you.
Ah, okay, thank you. I was gonna say finish up this one, but that's fine. Uh all right, um so I have a, let's see, a motion by Bill, is that right? A second by Mary. Um any further discussion, Evan?
Is this uh supported by both landowners as well?
Oh, yes, very. And we have Ben here from Hasse, who's their representative.
For votes, so. Sorry, Ben.
Any other uh any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that one passes unanimously. Thanks. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Way to handle the heavy lifting.
All right, August showed up just in time. How how do you do that, August? All right, uh item number ten, independent contractor agreement between Love Communications and Grand County for Media Agency Services. August Granith, Economic Development Director.
Um yeah, so the agenda summary kind of captures the details. Um basically, we've had a longstanding relationship with Love Communications as our media agency of record carrying out any number of kind of scope of work tied to marketing strategy, media planning, media buying, et cetera. Last year, we went through an R F P uh process in which they were the winning bid um and uh became our agency of record for up to three years total contract length. Um our understanding of how the contract was written is that it basically was going to be auto renewed. That was a misunderstanding on both our part and the Love Communications part. And so we had started this year with new programming dollars that they were spending on our behalf. Yeah, we didn't cash until January, but we actually had to go, that we had not moved the contract, basically. So we worked um with the Commission Administrator Office to see what was the best route to rectifying this issue. It was identified that we would have to go back to R F P to comply with our purchasing policy um for a minimum of seven days. Uh so we went back out to bid. Uh the dates are in the packet. And basically, Love was the only submitter to that R F P proposal. Uh so they were the winner of the R F P. And in the packet is a independent contractor agreement between Grand County and Love Communications for the scope of work. Um and we were reading in the R F P. Only real changes um are additional section for data strategy. So basically allowing us, Mary spoke this earlier, um Cal Council Board meeting. This is a change to the scope of work, really trying to ensure that we have a better understanding on an ongoing monthly basis of what our occupancy and other visitation indicators look like and put into a report that are digestible by decision makers in the county as well as the general public and putting that to their data science team to put together as they're already doing our marketing research on an ongoing basis. So that's not something that's floating around in our our heads on a monthly basis, thinking about, when are we going to put this work together? Let's solve the various requirements by the time. Um the other piece, main piece of scope of work is the media budget. So that's that's paid media that's been approved in the in the twenty twenty three county budget. So that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fly market, spend a hundred thousand dollars for drive market, a hundred thousand dollars for timed entry. Um the the commission is basically ten percent on that total budget. It's a very below industry standards, so you miss really good deal on that. And then up to thirty five thousand dollars for the creation of creative assets. So that's if we need to refresh any of our ads. I don't anticipate spending that entire amount of money, but that's kind of up to, which will be budgeted, so we want to put that in contract.
And so those ad spend numbers are part of the seven hundred and forty five thousand.
Yeah, so so it's it's that ad spend plus the creative plus the data strategy. Add it to that total amount, it's all on the budget for different budget codes. Um in a lot of ways, this has already been considered by the commission outside of the data strategy component. And uh it's really of utmost importance as we're already been doing work then on the understanding of being a contract. So try and make sure we meet the good relationship with our vendors. Yeah, Mary.
I move to approve the media agency independent contractor agreement, I C A with Love's Communication.
Thanks, Mary. All right, I got uh I got a motion by Mary and a second by Bill. Throw it up there. Uh discussion or questions for August on this?
So would this just be another annual contract or would this one?
So the structure of it, and and we were advised to not do an auto renewal contract.
Gotcha.
Because we wanted to make sure that the scope of work is tied to the annual contract. So that, you know, every year but the idea was that I'm having enough, the having affirmative renewal with Love. It says, here is what our scope of work looks like for next year at the end of our budget process. So that it's not, okay, we're renewing this contract, the scope of work is for last year, and we'll talk about the details later. Um and we will just now know affirmatively, that's an absolute must do in a separate basic.
Yeah, so it's um, what it will allow is if the commission wants to renew it next year, they don't have to go back up to bid. It will rather come to you as the scope of work for approval to go with that contract. It won't automatically renew without it coming to you guys to say that looks good.
Yeah, just saves our office time.
Go ahead, Stephen.
And and then make sure that we meet, we'll make sure to meet the deadline before it expires. So there's a period of time that we have to affirmatively make the decision to renew it because it's the commissioner's ability to choose whether we renew it or not. So we'd have to make sure we we calendar it beforehand. Yeah, and so that the the annual agreement expires at the last day of this year.
Bill? I guess my question is along those lines. It looks like it was only open from the eighth till the fifteen. Is that standard? I mean, or do we have the option to allow other people to bid on this in the future? Because it seems like a very close window there and who would who would step up? I mean, have in the past, has there been other bids against Love?
Yeah, so last year we had a, I believe, a thirty day uh window last summer. Uh we also did another short term bid just for time entry last year. So this is the third R F P done for a media agency in the last twelve months or so. Um the intention of the one happened during the summer. We had four, I think, submittals and and out of those, which represented kind of, I think, the same with the crop of who would would be supposed to be would consider um amongst staff and stakeholders. And but Love still scored the highest. Um and in the large part, that is because they do do U T ops of tourism. Mediifying and planning for a lot of their campaigns. So historically, it's been a really good opportunity for us to piggyback on their strategy. And they're considered many, at least in Utah. So when we were considering other other bidders, we actually got, I got personal calls from hoteliers. It's telling me things.
But yes, it is within the procurement policy to have that. I'm curious.
Great. Uh any other questions or comments? Uh the motion on the table, Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Winfield. So I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing with Commissioner Hadeen absent. Um uh agenda item eleven, mob information. Yeah, is that is that the only way you have on today, August? All right. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's the first time that's happened.
Yeah. Item number eleven, uh Mob Information Center Annual Operating Plan twenty twenty three, Mallory Nassau, Commission Administrator.
Yes, and so this goes hand in hand with the lease for the M I C that was entered into with C N H A. And and this just outlines every year, the partnerships, who's contributing and what the M I C staff will do with the funding. Uh so you will also see an item, I think it's on the consent agenda for the Forest Service Partnership Agreement. And that's also tied to this. They have that process and it's simply to allow them to give more money.
All right, uh everyone get a chance to look at the operating plan, I assume, and yeah.
I'm making, um I move to approve the Moab Information Center Operating Plan. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner McCurdy. Um any other discussions or questions for Mallory? Stephen?
Did we ever discuss who's doing the snow removal?
He is new.
But did we?
It's in the operating plan, Evans. Uh, let's see, any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes six to nothing unanimously with Commissioner Hadeen absent. Um, moving on to agenda item twelve, First Amendment to the Parental Defender Agreement, Mallory Nassau.
Yes, so at the last meeting, um, you all approved this agreement and afterwards um, Autumn, our parental defender, just noticed that there are a few words missing. Um, and I think this could have gone on the consent agenda, but just for transparency that we would bring it to you and it should be pretty cut and dry.
Thank you.
Yes, Kevin. I move to approve the First Amendment to the Parental Defender Agreement.
Thank you. All right, uh, motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and second by Commissioner Winfield. Any questions on the agreement? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. Um, we are on to agenda item thirteen, Independent Contractor Agreement with Bowen, Collins and Associates for Grand County Pack Creek Project Scoping. This is our uh clerk auditor, uh, Gabe Witech.
One second, please. All right, um, this is a grant that we were awarded a brick grant um last fall and we're getting around to getting a contractor to execute it so that we can um apply for the follow-up brick grants um uh to actually implement what this what this current contracted project is um looking to uh establish. And as you see, um, as this is included in the packet, we went through the informal quote procurement process for bids under uh fifty thousand dollars. Um, and um Flood Plane Administrator Bill Hulse, as well as Road Supervisor Bill Jackson, um, and uh agreed that um the bid offered by Bowen, Collins and Associates uh for the project um was the best bid. Um, this is a contractor that has completed FEMA mapping for both the city and county and um uh, Bill Hulse in particular has has been really impressed with um the work that they've done here locally and their familiarity already with this, um, following through with this project. And uh, yeah, any questions?
Any questions for Gabe? Mary?
I move to approve the independent contract agreement with Bowen, Collins and Associates for Grand County Pack Creek Project Scoping.
Thank you. Mike, second? All right, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously, six to nothing. Uh, we're on to item fourteen, Amendment to the Lease Agreement with Four Corners for the Interact Clubhouse. Uh, this is Chris Barrett, our Strategic Development Director. Is Chris on Zoom?
I don't think he's on um anymore, so I'll quickly present. This is just changing our agreement to allow for the purchase um without additional appraisals.
Right.
With just one appraisal.
Go ahead, Stephen. In the original contract, and I've worked with Chris on this, in the original contract, we had to obtain three different appraisals. Instead, we've obtained one appraisal that we liked. And so we're making an amendment in the lease that says that we're going to cancel the lease and then additionally, we're going to utilize the appraisal that's attached for the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, um, any discussion or questions for Stephen or Mallory? Kevin?
I'm, excuse me, I move to approve the First Amendment to the lease to the lease agreement between Grand County and Four Corners Community Behavioral Health.
Thank you. Second, Bill? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes six to nothing unanimous. Uh, agenda item fifteen, Ratification of Letters Sent to Representatives of the Revenue and Taxation Committee for the State of Utah. And I'm presenting this one. So this is a letter that I drafted in uh advance of our um Mary's, myself, and Bill's also uh going up to the Capitol and talking to the Revenue and Taxation Committee. And before drafting the letter, I reached out to uh commissioners and um uh definitely realized that we had a majority of commissioners who would like to sign onto this letter. Uh, I also heard back from at least one commissioner who um expressed neither opposition nor approval, but but um, but a bit of recense, so we didn't put this on the consent agenda. And um it needs to be ratified. Uh, so um, I assume all of you all had a chance to read the letter. It did go out to said uh representatives and um, like I said, this is this is a ratification. Yeah, Mary?
I moved to, I moved to approve the ratification of letters sent to representatives at the Revenue and Taxation Committee for the State of Utah.
Thank you. Second, Evan? All right, uh, any discussion?
Um, maybe just in in a, you you said you, you know, made sure a ma- majority of the commission was okay with the letter ahead of time. I I think it was all, we had a motion in some previous meeting that this is our policy to, you know, to support.
To support, yeah.
So just wanna make it clear to the public that, you know, you, yes, you weren't taking any shortcuts and sending these.
Yeah, I believe it was the uh, it was the January seventeenth um commission meeting where we voted to oppose uh legislation that would affect the um, yeah, the the TRT as it was currently written, so I felt comfortable with that. But but I do also very much recognize other commissioners who um might have differing views and and absolutely give them an opportunity to speak up if they like. Uh, all right, um, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And all those opposed? And everyone in abstinence? Got it, thank you. Uh, the motion passes uh four to nothing with um Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy abstaining and Commissioner Hadeen absent. We will move on to the consent agenda and we have a few consent agenda items to read out. Uh, item number seventeen, voluntary appointment to the Thompson Springs Special Service District Water Board. Uh, voluntary appointment to the Grand County Recreation Special Service District. Um, event tied agreement for Grand County Dispatch. Uh, number twenty, uh, US Forest Service Mob Information Center Partnership Agreement Modification. Uh, number twenty-one, uh, mural agreement between the City of Moab, Grand County and Holly Williams. Uh, item number twenty-two, approval of payment of a one percent fee for the lobbying efforts of the National Association of Counties, known as NACO, regarding the US Treasury appropriations awarded uh Grand County as part of the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, LATCF. And lastly, uh, dot gov domain registration initial request.
I I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks, Kevin. So, all right, I have a uh motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Um, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda is presented. And the motion passes uh six to nothing. And uh finally, we're on to our public hearing. Um, uh, public hearing, Manderfield HDHO amended development agreement for final plat extension, Alisa Martin.
Thank you. So yes, this is a request. Uh, we've had these before in the past, you're probably familiar. Um, request to amend the Manderfield High End City Housing Overlay Development Agree, um, Overlay Development Agreement for the purpose of extending the final plat approval and reporting deadline. This HHO, um, the HHO five district was approved for the property located at twenty-six ninety-one Desert Road on April twenty-first, twenty twenty. Be ordered in six-ten. Subsequently, the Manderfield, the Manderfield subdivision, which was previously named Desert Sun. Preliminary plat was approved by planning staff on December eighth, twenty twenty-one. The final plat is currently being processed, but the expiration date for approval and recording of the final plat has already passed. That was on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, the applicant has stated reasons for the delay in processing the final plat, including challenges and finding an available engineer for the development of civil plans required and application. Um, sorry, and the county staffing transitions, in short, it is since the county approved the HGHO rezon. This extension would give the applicant until April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to report their final plat. And we have already finalized the processing of that final plat, so it would be slated to be on your next commission agenda on March seventh, if that's, that's all that's happening. So, so that's it for now.
If it looks like that March seventh meeting isn't gonna happen, is this, is this super timely that it would need?
It's only just because it it, we just wanna get it approved before that April twenty-first deadline.
Okay, so if we approve it at, say, a March twenty-first meeting, then it's not gonna be a big deal. Okay, great. Thank you.
And then, yeah, you're not voting on this tonight.
Right.
So it's just a public hearing. We, we did have one public comment that came in from from the planning commission stage. Um, so we'll be waiting. If there are other public comments, we'll forward to you.
Okay. Then uh, are there any other uh questions for Alisa before I open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I will open this public hearing um for comment on the Manderfield HDHO amended development agreements uh for the final plat extension. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to make a comment at this time? And is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard concerning this uh this development agreement, amended development agreement? That's it? All right. Um, all right, so it looks like we don't have any uh further public comment tonight. We'll leave the public hearing open until, I believe it's uh Wednesday, March first at five PM. Great. Thank you, Alisa. Uh, all right, it looks like we don't have any further agenda items. We've gotten to the end of it. Um, so I will adjourn this uh regular Grand County Commission meeting. And thank you, guys. It's been a long one.